Hi, good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Tuesday, September 26, 2023. I'd like to welcome everyone and call the meeting to order. We are just coming out of an executive session, so I'm sorry we're starting just a few minutes late. We're going to start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, a integrid public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In all meetings, we start with the reading of the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. I think we have some people here for public comment. If you just want to come to the table one at a time, I don't have a list or anything, but... So whoever wants to go first? You can sit together and then one can speak at a time. No, alright.
Hi.
Hi.
I know a bunch of you. My name is Mary Young. I have two children in Wakefield Public Schools. My two children are the fourth generation that will graduate Wakefield Public Schools. We have an extreme amount of Wakefield pride. I'm going to start out with the definition of self-control: the ability to control oneself, in particular one's emotions and desires, or the expression of them in one's behavior, especially in difficult situations. Given opportunities through life, we learn self-control because we know that our actions have consequences. A kindergartner learns not to hit because there are consequences. A fourth grader learns that you have to turn in that poster project on time, otherwise there are consequences. A middle school child is capable of learning self-control over the phone if the school would follow through with direct and heavily weighted consequences for repeat offenders. Since the world returned from isolation in 2020, parents of our community have seen severe examples of physical and sexual assault in our middle school. We have seen traumatic examples of bullying in our middle school. We have witnessed the decline in mental health and social and emotional well-being. We have heard of the hallway and cafeteria fights in our middle school, and I am astounded at the most recent communication from our schools of awful disrespect being given to teachers, faculty, and administrators at the middle school. We continue as a society to use COVID-19 as a crutch or an excuse for fixing a problem, but the real problem here is that the Galvin Middle School administration needs to enforce all policies every single day with every single student. I understand that it's exhausting because, hey, I'm a mom too, who needs to constantly reinforce policies with my own children. Yes, kids make mistakes, but only by these mistakes and the direct consequences do they learn self-control over their own actions. Parents need to parent and schools need to teach. Placing a phone in a pouch for a day leads to several complications. First, you've removed the opportunity that the school system has to teach these children at a vital age self-control. Yes, by all means, limit the use of phones. I'm not saying that I'm against that. By enforcing policies that have already been in place by well-thought ideas, there should be a consequence for the first offense, and even bigger consequence for the second offense, and hell, take the darn phone away. And require parents to come into school, retrieve it. I'm not kidding. If these parents have to come into that school more than once to retrieve that phone because their child broke policy, then you're going to see a lot of children being parented. Second, under the facts and questions section that we were sent, there was a list of questions asked, and one in particular struck me as a liability that almost seems like the school's willing to take. The question was, what happens if my student forgets to unlock their pouch on their way to school? And the answer was, students may return to the building if it is open and unlock their pouches. Alternatively, they can enjoy a cell-free evening or weekend, which could be a joyful unintended consequence. I must remind you, these phones don't belong to the school. These phones don't even belong to those children. They belong to the hard-working adults that pay for those phones and have them for the very reason of communication. If my child was in a rush and had to ride the bus home, she would not be able to return to the school to unlock her phone. Sit with that for a second. She doesn't have a choice. If she gets to my house, we no longer have a home phone, much like a lot of parents in our community. We instead rely on our cellphones as the only form of communication if there is an emergency. Is the school willing to be responsible if my child or any other child could not contact myself or their parents, or God forbid, even contact emergency services should an emergency arise? Some children can't even remember to brush their teeth in the morning without being told and reminded constantly by the parents, but you're expecting them to remember to bring an added item back and forth every single day and remember them to unlock it before leaving to go home, as if these children don't already have enough on their plates as it is. Doug, I'm sorry to pull you out, buddy, but perhaps it's time you move your office down to the Galvin Middle School so that you can start overseeing the policies and procedures that are not being followed by these children and by administration, and perhaps give a guidance to the administration on the appropriate consequences that now can be swift, direct, and constant every single time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Hello, my name is Dawn Millward. I have two children in the Wakefield Public School District One, at the Galvin One at the high school. First off, I would like to thank the school committee for your continued hard work. I'm not here to support phones in the classroom. However, I'm here to address two concerns tonight, both regarding the new cellphone initiative. My first concern that I would like to address is how this initiative was first communicated. This is not simply a change in the lunch menu from chicken nuggets to chicken patty. I feel as though this should have been its own email and not simply a link within the family communication letter. I receive text messages all the time for when buses are running late, or just today I got one regarding the safety drill that's tomorrow. A significant change like this warrants more attention than just a link in a newsletter that can easily be overlooked. Communication is key, and once again, I feel as though this is an area that lacks and could be a lot stronger in Wakefield. My second concern is the new initiative as a whole and following the correct process for determining school policies. The letter to Galvin Middle School families indicates that a cellphone policy is in place by stating, "In spite of having phone-free..." Excuse me. "In spite of having a phone-free school policy where student cellphones are expected to be turned off and in lockers for the entirety of the day." Now, if I've done my homework correctly, the Galvin does not have a clearly-written cellphone policy in place. In the updated 2023 Galvin Middle School handbook, all I could find was unauthorized use of cellphones falls under a Group A behavior with listed consequences. Nowhere does it actually state in the Galvin Middle School handbook what unauthorized use is or where phones are meant to be kept. In the district-wide handbook, it states, "Students may use cellphones during class time only if under the direct supervision of an educator or administrator." It is my understanding that in 2016 handbook, there was specific wording used on where cellphones were supposed to be stored. However, in 2017, that wording was removed, and since then, students have been verbally told phones had to be shut off and placed in lockers. It is my understanding that one of the responsibilities of the school committee deals with policy. Considering this is drastically changing the unwritten policy, I strongly believe this should be discussed and voted on by the school committee and not just be put in place by the principal. It opens up a big precedent for future policies, in my opinion. My other thoughts include, deal with the offenders. Why is the whole school going to have to use the yonder if we're not dealing with the offenders? What other initiatives have already been implemented prior to determining the whole school body should have to lock up their phones? Maybe repeat offenders have to use the yonder pouch. I imagine a teacher confiscating a phone to a yonder pouch would be a great consequence in the middle of a class and a pretty good lesson about following rules. Will parents have the ability to opt out and have their child follow the current policy or by just having them in their lockers? What are the consequences for not adhering to the new policy? Also, what's the dismissal going to look like in a timely manner when every single kid has to walk through a door and unlock their yonder pouch? I feel as though this is a very unnecessary initiative for those who follow the current rules, one as a parent I cannot support. I was very happy when my child was able to contact me during the water main break as the school struggled to deal with that situation. I don't believe phones belong in the classroom, but I also don't believe they should be locked up. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Hi. I'm really nervous. I'm sorry. My name is Yanni Dodge. I have two children in the Wakefield School System. One is in eighth grade and one is in fourth grade. I'm just wondering, I mean, I will be echoing a lot of what Dawn and Mary said, but I do have some thoughts of my own. I'm just wondering when this grant was applied for, who applied for it, and why is every single child going to have to use these pouches when this was out of left field, at least for me it was? It just seems a little odd that every single child has to be subjected to the same discipline of, because I consider these pouches discipline, when most kids haven't done anything wrong to deserve it. I purchased the phone for my child. I trust him with the device. I trust him to not bully. I trust him not to take inappropriate pictures. I trust him to... I look through his phone every single night. I mean, he charges it downstairs when he goes to bed. I think of myself as a responsible parent, and I really, I do trust him. And so far, when I text him, he responds. When I call, he answers. It's very back and forth with him. I just, I just feel like it takes a lot off of the teachers and the administration with these pouches. It's just clear-cut, everyone gets the same sentence. It's like a prison sentence. It's like everyone gets the same thing, no matter what crime you committed, even if you're innocent. I don't know. It just seems strange to me. I'm wondering if the teachers are going to be using these pouches while they're in the classroom, because if phones are a problem universally, are they a problem with the teachers picking up their phones and responding or looking at text messages or whatever? I just, I'm just playing the devil's advocate here. I'm wondering, what, what makes you think the administration can handle an emergency should an emergency arise? When the school flooded due to the water main break, the Galvin was not prepared. I mean, it was a nightmare as a parent being on the outside. We couldn't find our kids. We had no idea where they were. They were all lined up all over the school and outside the school, and it was like, it was just chaos. So, I mean, everyone's initial thought was, oh, my gosh, what if there's a lockdown? What if there's a school shooter and there's a lockdown? And then people say, well, it's Wakefield. That's not going to happen. I'm born and raised in Wakefield. I worked at the savings bank in Greenwood. I was robbed as a teller with a gun. It happens. It's real. This happens. So, my, my thoughts are, they're valid, they're true, but they're from experience. So, you know, you hear about the school shootings and we're just so like, I don't know, we're not fazed by them anymore because they happen so often. And so, to me, it's just really scary because it could happen. It could happen at any, anytime, and it just makes me nervous, and I want my child to be able to access their telephone if that happens. But to be not so extreme, what happens with the child who has diabetes and they use their device to check their blood sugar throughout the day? That is an actual exemption to the pouch. I get that. What about the child who has severe anxiety? That's a diagnosis. Are they going to have an exemption? What about the girl who may or may not be expecting her period? And it's like, I want to have my phone on me. What if I need my mom? What if I had need to change clothes? What if I can't go to the, you know, the school nurse because I'm stuck in a bathroom? You know, these are the things that I think of, especially with having a girl coming into the Galvin next year. I'm just wondering what kind of exemptions they're going to be and who's going to get approved for them. I did also print the, the policy from the school committee that states that children are able to, students are able to use their cellphones during class time under the supervision of an educator or administrator. I spoke to my son, and he does use his cellphone in class for science when it's needed. There are not enough tools in the classroom for him to access. They don't have timers and stopwatches available to every student. So, the teacher asked that he bring his phone to class so that he could do his work, but he required a device to do it because he had it. So, those are the types of things where if we're not even giving our students the proper tools throughout the day and they're asked to bring their devices to class, that's something to think about, you know, that I'm supplying, but I don't know. It's just, it's come to my attention that a policy was in the handbook years ago, but the entire fifth grade, maybe even additional years, weren't even aware of that policy. This year's handbook has no mention of the restrictions. I just think essentially the administration will be taking away, denying the access to their personal devices. I don't want my child on his phone during the day. I don't want him on whatever, Snapchat, whatever kids are using. I don't. But I do want him to have access to it. I'm wondering if these classrooms, every single classroom will be equipped with a magnet. If every classroom is in lockdown, is there a demagnetized magnet in there so those pouches can open? Because what I've heard is that the pouches will be on their beings. They will be able to have the pouches with them, meaning they'll have their cellphones with them. My son also understood that their cellphones would be in pouches on the Chromebook case in homeroom. So, he was confused, whereas I was confused. I thought, I thought he was going to have it with him. He thought it had to be in homeroom. So, there's confusion about that, and I'm not sure what is being talked about in school. So, overall, I'm just wondering what dismissal will look like, what emergencies will look like, can parents opt out? Do kids, parents have a say? And most importantly, I just wish that you guys were able to have voted on this prior to this becoming even an issue on the table. So, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Yanni. I know later in the school committee meeting, Megan is coming, so hopefully some of those questions will get answered. Is there anyone else in studio that has a public comment? Okay, because I think we have someone on Zoom, right? We should, maybe? We did have a member send us an email. Alex? Oh, I thought they were asking me. Okay, we're getting, yes, so both? No, Alex? Alright, so, do Mark and Erin want to speak? Mark does, okay. Maybe Erin? Maybe there's an Alex? I'm just saying, that's who he is. No, hold on. Good?
Got my cellphone, so.
Okay. If, if Mark or Erin or Alex, we could, we could open it back up, given the technicals. We're just going to, we're going to move along to the student advisory. We have two new students. I would like you both in studio to introduce yourself, and then you can give us some updates.
Hi, my name is Ahmed Rahman. I'm a junior.
I'm Shay Sunken. I am a junior.
So, as this is our first meeting, just going to be giving a shorter-form student report today, but hopefully grow in length as the year goes on. But we'll start with academics.
Excuse me, Ahmed. Could you speak a little bit louder into the mic? So, they just want people, I'm sure, really want to hear what you say.
Yeah. So, Wakefield Memorial High School is going to be hosting the PCTs on Saturday, October 14th, for both 10th and 11th graders. And as a reminder, we were asked to state that the deadline to register is October 2nd of this year.
And on to the academics and visual performing arts. The Wakefield Marching Band started their competition season with an indoor show at Medford High School last Saturday. Hopefully, the weather can cooperate for their first outdoor competition at North Middlesex High School on Saturday, September 30th.
So, with Wakefield High School Athletics also finished in the top 10 in the state for Boston's Globes Dalton Award, which is given to the high school teams in Massachusetts with the best overall combined win-loss records for all of their school sports teams. This is the second year in a row that Wakefield High School has finished in the top 10.
And on to the other sports. Again, football is undefeated with a 3-0 record. They currently have the longest active winning streak in the state with 18 consecutive wins. The team has not lost a game since the year 2021. And the Boys and Girls Cross Country Team are currently undefeated and currently one of the top-ranked teams in the state.
The Boys Soccer Team is off to a great start and is currently first place in the Middlesex Freedom Division. The team had some very impressive wins with some very strong opponents this year, and the volleyball team is also off to one of their best starts in school history with a numerous amount of impressive wins over traditionally strong teams such as Woburn and Arlington.
Also, coming up tomorrow, we have an early release day, and our spirit week at the high school will take place next week.
Yeah, and just to end it off, as you guys will hear more about later, we have hosted the SWISH exchange students last week, and they have gotten a chance to be included in the Wakefield High School, um, school.
Sports and stuff, they've came to the games. It's been fun.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the students? They're going to be joining us by every, every time we meet, so twice a month. Yeah, excellent. Welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah. So, we want to do consent. Do you have an motion for the consent agenda?
I do. Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the September 12th, 2023 school committee meeting and accept the minutes of the September 18th, 2023 school committee Student Services Subcommittee meeting and the September 19th, 2023 school committee Policy and Communications Subcommittee meeting as presented.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? There's no opposed, so passes unanimously. I forgot to mention, Tom Markham is not with us this evening. He had a conflict with his profession, so he'll be with us next time. We're going to go invite... Do we have anyone for a public comment? And then he should pop up on our screen, right? Oh, he has to turn his video on. While we're waiting for the public speaking, I'd like to invite the Wakefield Educational Foundation, who we finally refer to as WEF. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for having us. We're excited to be here tonight. I'm Melissa Holmes.
This is Carrie Mizouni.
And we are co-presidents of Wakefield Educational Foundation, or WEF. I know a lot of you know a little bit about what WEF does, so we'll keep it very quick. But we want to first express our gratitude for the amazing support that we have in the Wakefield community that allows WEF to do what we do each year. So, we're really grateful, and we understand that a lot of the support comes from people here tonight, the school committee, the administration, the amazing volunteers, from our PTOs, principals, mascots. So, thank you so much. Our, our mission for WEF is to enhance and celebrate the education in Wakefield Public Schools, and we do this in several key ways. First, we have an annual grant process where teachers, PTOs, administrators can apply for funds for enrichment activities and events to enrich the curriculum across all of our public schools in Wakefield. Our grant cycle is now open, so I'd like to encourage our school committees, uh, communities to check out our website, wef01880.org for more details and consider applying for funding for your programs. Our grants, over the years, have funded things like bubble shows at Doyle, engineering prototypes at the high school, and so much in between. So, to date, WEF has given over $650,000 in grant awards to Wakefield Public Schools, and we're so excited to continue that work. Also, WEF hosts our annual Celebration of Learning event in April, where we honor students, staff, volunteers, and community members who demonstrate leadership and commitment to our Wakefield Public Schools. This is a favorite annual community event, and we couldn't do it without the support and partnership with Superintendent Doug Lyons, Assistant Superintendent Kara Morrow, and the incredible work of all of our principals. They work really hard to partner with us to put on such a positive event. That will be happening in April, and more information will come as we get a little bit closer. But in the meantime, I'm going to send it over to Carrie to talk a little bit about a few other initiatives that we have going on.
Sure. Thanks, Melissa. We also want to tell you about an exciting grant award that we received this year. We applied for and were awarded a three-year Cummings Grant. We received $105,000 over the three years, and we're using it to build a comprehensive behavioral mental health program throughout the district. There is a start already. This is to enhance what we currently have, and we're working closely, again, with Superintendent Lyons, Assistant Superintendent Morrow, and Andrew Sidorni, Jen Hart, and Catherine Dingra from the community on this effort. And we look forward to maybe reporting back to you on the outcomes as, as we see them. And finally, we, you know, just a little bit about, you know, WEF, WEF is an all-volunteer-run program. So, all of the work is, all of the work is done by volunteers. That includes managing or coordinating all of the fundraisers that we do. All of the money that we raise goes right back into the grant process. Nothing we do goes outside of that. So, wanted to just share some of our favorite fundraisers. So wanted to just share some of our favorite fundraisers. I don't know if you all have your WEF calendar. Want to put a plug in for that, but if you don't have it, you can get it at your school's main offices or some local businesses around town. They're great because they have the Wakefield Public School schedule on there, the holidays, it even has the Galvin six-day, um, schedule on there, so it's a useful tool as well, as well as being beautiful. And we'll continue to do that. We work closely with the art teachers across the district to gather art. And some of the others, there's the spelling bee, which I think you are well aware of. We've had a school committee team, which is very fun. The adult spelling bee, I should say. We have the Stars staff and teachers are really special. That's a sort of a appreciate, appreciation certificate that, um, students and parents can send to their teachers and administrators, and administrators, um, twice a year. We have that in December and May. And finally, there's the online auction. Just letting you know what's out there. If you hear about them, we try to promote them in the newsletters, et cetera. Participate. It's, it's, you know, the way that we give back to our schools for these enrichment programs. And the only other thing I want to say is that, again, we're all volunteer, so we, if, if you know of anyone who wants to consider working with WEF, they might be very tied in with their PTOs, which is great. WEF is just another opportunity to give back to the schools. We're having an information session on October 11th at the high school at 6:30 to 7:00. Very, very brief for potential volunteers, and again, they can learn more about the info session on the website at wef01880. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
Not a question, just a statement. I just wanted to thank you for your incredible work. I know how hard both of you work and the entire team, and the value that you provide to just make the, the experience for our students so much more enriching is just incredible, and also giving the opportunity to, to let our teachers know, know they're appreciated, both between the Stars and the Celebration of Learning. Just wanted you to know, that doesn't go unnoticed. I know you work very hard and just provide my appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pete. Dr. Lyons, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, just as you talked about, sort of all the work that, that you've done, I've, like, I've been in a classroom when the Bubbles program was going on. I've applied for grants. One of the first things I did, sort of when we met back after COVID, was go to a Celebration of Learning, and the amount of positivity that was in, like, the Galvin Auditorium at that was just, I couldn't even put words to it. It was, it was amazing just hearing about all the great things that were happening in the community. I just think WEF's ability to sort of collaborate between groups in our community on, on multiple levels is sort of just remarkable, and that it isn't all volunteer, sort of staff is, is amazing. Every time I, I talk to somebody from WEF, I learn, like, a new thing. I learned that the calendar was, um, sometimes you'll go around after the art exposition at the Galvin and you'll take photos of all of the different gray levels of art to help sort of put the calendar together. It's just, you're everywhere, and it's, and it's fantastic. I think Wakefield's lucky to have you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you.
I think I would just add, I'd like to say thank you to all of, from all of the grant recipients that, of all the grants that you have funded over the years, and, and we are part of that process, but for those that, that don't see or aren't there for the process, um, the WEF team tries, tire, they work tirelessly, they work very, very hard to try to meet the needs of every grant applicant, right? There's always more asks than there is a budget, um, but they'll go, you know, go through the grants once and then try to reorder to think, how might we fund something differently? Are there alternative funding sources? So really, we're a remarkable partner for the Wakefield Public Schools and for the administration, and from all of the grant recipients and all the work you do, we cannot thank you enough. Thank you.
Thank you so much from our whole WEF team. Thank you.
And I, I did volunteer years ago for WEF, and it, and it's effortless, and, and you go into the meeting and there's, there's, there was a table of women, plus Andy, who, but they're genuinely happy that you're there, and there, there are women there whose kids have long since graduated, which says a lot about that the, the work is, is, is hard, but it's fun at the same time. Yeah. So thank you for coming. If you ever want to come back, the door is always open.
We'd like to.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So we're going to, oh, wait, do we have, oh, okay. PTO presidents and mascots. So excited. I told Doug it was a goal to get a mascot to come to the studio. I don't, other, other PTO leads in the.
I think so.
Yeah. There were some, there was.
They're in the green room?
Yeah.
So I said, we're gonna bring two schools up at a time, and we would do it alphabetically. Hello? Yeah, so Dolbear and Greenwood.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Emily Fitzgerald from Dolbear, and this is Christine Robinson.
Hi.
And we're part of the steering committee at Dolbear. We're off to a great start this year. We had our first enrichment program. Johnny McKay, who is this, anyone who knows Dolbear, um, he's this really magical storyteller and musician that the kids love. That was our first enrichment program. We have a big, um.
Fall festival this, fall festival this Saturday from 11 to 2.
11 to 2, and it's food trucks and.
There's games, candy, music.
And our, um, fair.
And you don't have to be a Dolbear.
No.
Anyone can go to the fall festival.
Yes. And it'll be out back. Weather looks as good as.
There's pumpkins for everybody.
Yep.
Usually.
Doing pumpkins this year. That's just part of our enrichment that we do with all the donations from our dues, from our amazing families that really help us create our Dolbear magic every year. And we're part of the steering committee, which is three co-presidents, secretary, and two secretaries.
Two secretaries and a treasurer.
And our wonderful treasurer. So we're looking forward to a good year, and thank you guys for inviting us.
Yeah, I probably should have started. We, we invited the PTO leads tonight because the PTOs are a big part of the school community. Not only do they do enrichment, but they also give back to the teachers, right? There are different things for the teachers, and I just thought it'd be, you get these emails sometimes as a parent, like, your PTO dues are due, and, and I wanted to fit a face behind all the good work that's done at the school, so thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to meet some of the other PTOs as well, to kind of collaborate through the air, so it's nice to put names to faces. So thanks, guys. That was really kind of you.
Does anyone have any questions?
We have a couple Dolbear parents.
I, I will say, having attended many Dolbear PTO meetings, the amount of parent and guardian engagement this team gets is incredible. I mean, at the, at the Galvin, as an example, we don't get anywhere close to the amount of family engagement that, that, that this team gets, so, and I know that some of the other schools get, get similar engagement, but, but they do an amazing job just getting family involvement.
We have a really big turnout, especially some new kindergarten parents. As all the PTOs know, it's really important to get those new families in to show them what Wakefield's all about, because the community at Dolbear is strong, so.
Well, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Another Dolbear parent.
I love Dolbear.
Sorry Duncan couldn't make it today.
Yeah.
He's on vacation.
But I heard the performance was really exciting. I saw videos on my daughter's.
Johnny McKay?
What's it called? Yeah, the homeroom.
The homeroom app.
Yeah, so it was really fun.
He was really good.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome to stay, or you can head home. Do we have representatives from Greenwood?
Oh, I'm Ally Oaten. I am this year's PTO president at the Greenwood.
I'm Danielle Leager. I am this year's PTO treasurer.
So we have a lot of going on at Greenwood, as we do every year. We're getting ready to kick off with this year's volunteers for our PTO in the next week. Coming up is our big Halloween dance at the Greenwood School at the end of the month, which is a huge, huge turnout for all the families. Really, everybody looks forward to that. A big announcement that we have, that we just received, a $3,000 grant from the Whole Kids Foundation through Whole Foods. This is going to our Greenwood garden that was started a number of years ago. It was just a parent idea. She just came in, raised her hand and said, "I want to do this," and it has taken off. This grant will be used to create a new large native pollinator plant bed. It meets certification criteria and standards for Monarch Watch and National Wildlife Federation. This is gonna, um, help kids learn more about the relationship between pollinators and edible plants and the ecosystems, and the students are gonna be involved from step one through the whole process. Uh, this will also allow us to buy more edible plants and seeds, train the teachers, volunteers, bring in more educational programming. As it is now, our garden is a hand-on learning experience for kids every year. The teachers look forward to going out, and each class is responsible for planting a different bed. We've added to it every single year, which is amazing. We have two amazing volunteers that take that on every single year, and, um, in the past, we used to donate all the edible plants to the food pantry, and, uh, one year, we were able to donate over 30 pounds worth of food back to the food pantry. So it was amazing.
So one of the events we wanted to talk to you tonight about is our Author Fest, so that happens every year in the March, in March. Um, I am not only the treasurer, but for the past two years, I've been the chair of Author Fest, and it's a really great opportunity. I believe this year will be the 19th annual. It's a really great opportunity to bring local authors into Greenwood for kids to meet them, get to know them, and hear more about the writing process from a published author. We do our best to bring in different authors for each grade, or usually one author for every two grades. They do activities with the kids. They usually do an hour-long session, including a question and answer. Um, some of the older grades actually do get to do writing workshops with the authors. It's really fun every year to bring in different folks to meet with our students, and the feedback we get from the authors is fantastic. Our students have really great questions. We try to bring a local author in every year. We've had Sarah Lindrell, who is a Wakefield published author and mom in the school system, um, in for two years in a row, and we've, we aim to have three to four authors every year. So it's a highlight for the kids, and it's certainly a highlight for us as a PTO to bring them in, and all of the fundraising we do during the year, the PTO dues that our parents pay the beginning of the year help to fund programs like these and, um, the garden when we're not supportive at grants, so it's really exciting to see that work in action.
And speaking of fundraisers, April 6th will be our 11th Gator Gallup around Lake Quanapawit. This is a huge community 5K and fun run for the kids. Uh, the kids absolutely love it. They look forward to it. Uh, the Gator Gallup helps us raise funds for the Greenwood School PTO to go back to all our programming. It also, um, helps us raise a portion to give back to WEF every year, and this year, we were able to give back $1,500 to WEF.
Any questions? Does anyone, we don't have any Greenwood parents. Wait, where'd you go to school, Kevin?
I went to a hard school. I'm still proud.
Does anyone have any questions for Greenwood?
Thanks for coming out to me.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Oh, Walton.
Good evening. I'm Linda Butterworth, and this is Warrior, who was christened? Can we say that? Named by the, uh, by last year's Walton students. So he's, he's new, he's always been with us in spirit, but he finally came to reside with us, and we're really proud to have him represent our school.
And he's, he's, what is he?
He's a Wildcat. Warrior the Wildcat. And he's quite proud. This is my first year as president, but I've been heavily involved in the PTO since my kid, my first child went to Walton, um, and I actually had a little stint with Woodville, which was exciting, to see different ways that all the PTOs do things. We had a great opening day. We do a traditional boohoo yahoo breakfast, which I believe was started by our Laura Lovato, I think. She'll be up here. She's not gonna take credit. You know, so that you can either celebrate or cry when your kids go back to school over donuts and coffee, and typically, we have a second wave when the kindergarteners come and they take care of the rest of the donuts for them. Sometimes coffee, but don't tell the teachers. We also welcomed back our staff, and we have a lot, um, as you well know, we have a lot of new staff at Walton this year, which is pretty rare for us. We don't have a lot of turnover, um, but last year, we, we said farewell to quite a few. They went on to better things. Mrs. Warden retired, anyways. So we had a iced coffee cart, and it was, well, very, very, very much appreciated. It was a lot of fun, um, and it was a great way to also for, you know, for us to meet and put a face with some of our new staff, for those of us who don't get into the school all the time. Uh, this Thursday coming up, we have a ribbon-cutting ceremony. Thanks to all the hard work with the parent feedback, teacher feedback, and the school committee, we were able to get a better playground for Walton and have a black asphalt that, um, once corrected, no longer has traffic. We did, bit of an incident, but it's all good. Nobody got hurt, and now the kids don't have to play in our Davidson Circle. And speaking of Davidson Circle, I am working, um, by way of safe routes to school, which I was a parent representative, well, I still am, parent representative on, just changed hats. We have started working on a mural for our Davidson Circle. For those of you who know Walton, it's a very, it's a, it's not a one-way street, but it might as well be a one-way street up to a cul-de-sac, and that is where the Walton School lives, and sometimes you don't even know that that's a school back there. And so we are, the DPW is helping us by painting a large white circle, arrows around to, to help with the rolling drop-offs, and we are working with, uh, some parent volunteers and myself. We have created a design. Chris Olson, Stephanie Hennes, and Ryan Hennes are the artists behind it, um, and we just had a great meeting today. We're gonna incorporate our little rickety wall to paint something more permanent and hopefully, um, involve some kid art on the sides as well, like, for kids. So that's, uh, the school part, and then as far as the fun, we have our Halloween party coming up on October 27th. Maybe Warrior's gonna cut in. Uh, we have a lot of excitement from volunteers and a lot of new people, which is always a great thing. Uh, we had done the Fall Festival for two years, and now we're moving back to our old Halloween party, which really, for this age, I think, um, gives the kids something that they don't get, because they don't, they don't get to necessarily go out with their friends and costume, right? They go out with their little siblings, and, um, so the Halloween party really lets them hang out with their friends and, uh, share their, their holiday spirit. Uh, we are aiming for six enrichments this year, and the first one is in mid-October with Danielle Noyes, meteorologist, who maybe you have seen on TV, and, um, met, we bank WEF because many of our enrichments, uh, coming up are often funded by WEF grants, and we really appreciate that. And, uh, oh, and last thing is with the mural, we are also incorporating a principal initiative, which is, Principal Schmidt has really rebranded, I guess, the school and really focused on what our core values are and branded them into the Wildcat Way for. So it's be safe, be kind, and always do your best, and that will be a key part of our mural. I think that's it. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions, Linda? Or does the, does Warrior speak?
Warrior does not speak, but he can. Can I just give you, like, high fives?
Thank you for all of the, uh, the work on the playground and, uh, and partnering.
That's the wild part of the Wildcat.
I love it.
We're working on it.
I love it.
When, uh, when Tim O'Brien was here giving us his update, he was, uh, he was sure to mention sort of all of the, the assistance and the, the input that was given, both by, you know, the Walton PTO and the, and the teachers there, so just thanks for being a part of. So just thanks for being a part of sort of the whole picture.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. I think we have another mascot.
Hi, everybody. So I'm Christine Eno. I am one of the co-presidents of the Woodville PTO. I've been on the board for a few years now. Very excited to be here. Teddy is our awesome mascot. Teddy shows up to everything and he's just amazing. And we have a fun thing we're going to talk about at the end, but Teddy wanted to bring up. He's not going to speak about it, but I'll, I'll be his voice. So I'm one of the co-presidents, Jackie Natali.
Hi, I'm Jackie Natali. I'm just a member on the, the PTO board.
Yep. We have seven moms all together. It's myself, Jackie, Laura Michaelowski, Michelle Tora, Kendra Madden, Ty Moreira and Caroline Baske. And we are all so excited to do everything we do for the school, but we're not alone. We have a million volunteers. We have a lot of committees that do, that actually manage most of our big events. I mean, we're, we're all in the background helping, but I'd be remiss if I didn't thank them and, and we're just so grateful for all of them. They're tireless. They work so hard and they put together our Teddy Trot that's coming together in a few weeks and right, woo, Teddy. And that's a huge event. And so we're just lucky to have such a great community. But so for, for us, you know, we're pre-K now. We're pre-K to fourth grade. We have two pre-K classes from the Doyle in our school, which are amazing. We have about 450 children. It's so much fun in there. It's just magic. The first day of school was awesome. Our principal, Matt Carter, is, he's just, he's a gift. And so every year, a lot of the schools do a clap out at the end of the year while Matt Carter had all the fourth graders line up and a clap in the kids the first day of school, which was just full circle. And it's just such a wonderful place and we're so lucky to be there. But our biggest thing, we like to make sure that we always put first the pride we have in our community and just focus on building relationships with all of our Woodville bears and their families and make sure that everybody's included and welcome to come to everything. Our biggest, you know, what we do really is fundraise and that's to provide events and enrichments for our kids. And because we've had such generous people and we've done so well fundraising, we're able to, most of our, all of our events actually are free of charge. So we used to charge for events like our Halloween party, but now they're free. So everybody can come and you don't have to worry about it if you don't have, especially not these days, it's money's tough, right? So if you don't have $20 to bring your family, just everybody come and have a great time. So it's just, it's just a wonderful place. So the other thing I just wanted to say was thank you to everybody, Mr. Carter, Teddy, Mrs. Rossino, Mrs. T, all of our teachers, Perez, our custodians, Marty, Jason and Pete. We wouldn't be able to do what we do without everybody. So, so grateful for that. Upcoming events we have, we have the Teddy Trot on the 21st, which is our 5K around Lake Q. It starts with student races and we have a DJ. It's a big event, warmups and, you know, student races, the 5K, there's, you can do, your family can kind of just walk the lake and it's just a wonderful event. And that's usually in the morning. Hopefully it doesn't rain. Probably will because it's been raining since 2021, but that's fine. And then we have our book fair coming up on October 12th.
Yep, we have a book fair on October 12th and we partner with a local bookstore that, they run the fantastic book fairs and it's the Book Oasis in Stonem. So it's great. They bring in affordable books for all people. And it's great to also be giving back to a local store. And then in November, we have, on November 14th, I want to make sure I get it right. We have our second annual, We Are Woodville event, which is a diversity cultural celebration. We pair it with our second grade heritage projects and all of the second grade students do a little project where they display something about their heritage. And then we also invite community members to come in and do displays. We have dance performances, music performances. We would love to have food at the event, but we haven't figured out how to do that yet, but that's, since that's such a big part of cultural diversity, we would love to do that. But we invite anyone in the Woodville community, Woodville alumni, come back to the event, present if you would like to. We would love that.
We're going to have it in the gym this year because we had in the cafeteria last year and it was such a huge, it was just the outpouring of support and people was amazing, a little crowded. So the gym will be a better space for it, which we're excited about. Oh, gym and cafeteria. That's right.
Yes, yeah. The presentations will be in the gym and then the dance and music performances will be in the cafeteria.
Yep. And then the other thing we just wanted to talk about, we, we thought we were supposed to talk about kind of two things. So we chose an enrichment and then a wonderful event. Our enrichment that we wanted to talk about is the Discovery Museum is coming. They're coming October 30th through November 3rd. So they are a traveling workshop and they go to each grade, they go to each classroom. So there's an instructor that goes to each classroom. So we have to kind of organize 45 minutes per each class. And then they get, and the kids get hands on, they get to talk about science and different subjects. But we've made it so consistent so that each year they get something new, so that they're not repeating anything. So our kindergarteners get magnets. The first grade is about sound, second grade is physical changes of matter, third grade is chemistry lab, and the fourth grade is done in our music room because there's no windows and it's lights and lasers, which is super fun. We, I got to experience that one last year. So they're wonderful. And actually we've been lucky enough, we've been doing it at least since 2018. Stephen, you remember? And so, but they were able to do that. We've been lucky enough to get a WEF grant that covers most of the cost of that. So yay, WEF, thank you. And the other thing we just wanted to talk about real quick was Teddy had mentioned last week that he wanted to do a mascot dash or a mascot race. And so we were thinking about, we were trying to think about how we could do that. So we have the Greenwood Gator, right? And Walton Wildcat. And we have the doll, no, the Doll Bear Dragon. Right? And then we have Teddy. And so we were hoping to do that at maybe a townwide fourth grade kickball tournament in the spring. So I'm going to get in touch with all the other PTOs, see if we can get something together. All the kids can come and kind of cheer on each other. And while the kids are still in their elementary schools, they kind of will have this fun event and then they'll go off to Galvin and do great things there. So anyway, we love this town. Thank you guys. Thank you all so much. Thanks for having us.
Does anyone have any questions for Woodville?
Your, is the kickball an expansion from late summer?
Kind of. Well, so we, we just, we were thinking about something we could do that, you know, everybody could do, right? I mean, I could still play kickball, let's be honest.
Yeah.
I think I can.
I'm not very athletic, but I used to be. But so we just figured it's something that, you know, you don't have to have a lot of like catch and throw and you don't need a mitt and it's not something you really need training on. It's kind of on the fly and we just thought it was an easy sport to do. So, but if anybody has any other events, like we'll run it through everybody and see, but.
My daughter wanted, is in fourth grade this year and she wanted to challenge all the other fourth grades to something because they're, we always do the fourth grade teacher student basketball game, which is a highlight of the fourth grade experience. Sasha, if you're still up, we brought the game.
Hey Sasha.
That's great.
That's great.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thanks Teddy.
Teddy, how are you? You're the man, Teddy. You doing OK?
Oh, Teddy.
Guys, this is why I love distance. So it makes me so happy. You should do this every time.
Sorry, I'm, hi. Hi. I don't have a mascot. Mrs. Blacker did try to convince me to dress up like the Doyle duck, but I respectfully declined. So my name is Alexander Stout. I'm here on behalf of the Doyle preschool PTO as well as the classes at Woodville. We had a lot of, a core membership last year. We didn't take on roles like president or treasurer. We kind of just were chairs of the enrichment fundraisers that we were heading and oversaw what that entailed. So we're a little slow to get going, but we're really excited to continue fundraising, to provide enrichment opportunities for the preschoolers. And one that they're always looking forward to is the first responder car wash. They love that. My son raved about it. Couldn't believe that he could wash a fire truck. And others that came to the school were some about character building. We did different things that aligned with what they taught at the time, like barnyard animals or reptiles came in so they could touch the animals and learn about them in connection to what they were reading and talking about in the classroom. So we don't have any dates that I can share with you at this time, but I'm sure that you will hear from us. And if there is a mascot race, we can bring, I don't know, maybe one of you could be the Doyle duck next. So thanks for having us and I'm excited to be representing our youngest learners in Wakefield.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would nominate Mr. Montanella.
Yeah, he's a runner.
I might still have a hat.
Galvin.
So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Laura Lovata. I am representing the Galvin PTO tonight. I'm currently the VP of the Steering Committee this year. I have a sixth grader at Galvin. I also have a fourth grader at Walton. And so I just want to give you a quick update on what the Galvin's been up to. So first, we're currently running our Galvin Grows fundraiser. This is our largest and only fundraiser for the year. I'm sure you're aware of it, but it's basically families, it can be parents, guardians, it can be educators in the building, really anybody can send a message into students at the school, either with or without a donation, which is kind of nice. So basically those messages can be public and they get posted all over the first floor of the building, or they can be private and sent directly to the students' homeroom if they're kind of shy and they don't want to see, and I love you so much, I'm so proud of you, love mom and whatever on the wall. It can be sent directly to the classroom. So we're currently running that. Last week, we hosted a teacher appreciation breakfast, which is always a big hit. Donuts and bagels and coffee and all the things you could possibly want to kickstart your day, which was a really nice treat for the second full week of school. We are busy planning all of our night spots, which is typically like one or two nights a year by grade. The outing at the school with Henna artists and music and games and all sorts of things for the students to hang out and do at night with their friends. First one is coming up October 13th for the sixth grade. And last but not least, we're working on enrichment. We have some grade specific enrichment in the works. There's things that people always love, like eyes on owls, that'll, should be coming back. We're also adding a Juneteenth program this year. We got some feedback last year that it would be nice to sort of continue the conversation and that it didn't necessarily have to be in June or around the 19th, because that's a day off now for us. And we got some feedback on that. So we have, we're hoping to have storyteller Valerie Tutson from Arts for Learning come in and we're working on the WEF grant for that as well. So we've had some great support from WEF as well, so thank you. And we'll see kind of how that turns out this year, but that would be a nice addition to kind of continue the conversation and continue the education around Juneteenth. More to come on enrichment as we learn more about the availability and schedules at the Galvin. And I think that's pretty much it from us right now. Any questions on Galvin?
Or Walton or Doyle. Yeah, my term was up at Walton, so they snatched me for Galvin.
Don't forget the food pantry.
And the food pantry. No, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And last but not least, the high school. Hi.
Hi. Hi, my name is Massey Schuster. I have a junior at the high school and a first grader at the Woodville. I have been the PTSA president of the high school for two years now. PTSA at the high school is slightly different just because at this level, we tend to see the students becoming more independent. So we naturally see a drop off of parent participation. At the beginning of the year, we do send out an email asking families to send in a monetary due so that we can run events. PTSA runs several events throughout the year, several larger events. We do teacher appreciation, appreciation week. We start the year off doing like breakfast for the teachers. And then the student representatives really get involved and our secretary, Allison Trainer will tell you a little bit about that.
Hi, Allison. I also have an 11th grader, eighth grader, kindergarten, preschool in the school system. I want to be here forever. So as part of the PTSA, student representatives like me with us every month to run these events, help plan them and make them happen. Some of the events are Halloween treat bags for the teachers. We do thankful turkeys, cocoa and cookies for staff, kindness, snowflakes, Valentine's Day sweet treats, lucky leaders. We plant flowers in the spring outside. Teacher, teacher appreciation week. And then the last year's school, freeze pops for the students and ice cream for the teachers. These events only happen because of the monetary donations that we ask for and sign of geniuses that happen throughout the year for all these events from the teachers, I mean, from the parents. And we greatly appreciate all the donations. And that's it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the last item on, on the chair's piece is teacher negotiations update. Do you mind?
No, not at all. So we are currently in the midst of negotiating the Unit A contract with the Wakefield Education Association. And talks are going well. I think we're, we're sort of getting closer, finding, you know, sort of more and more common ground. There are still some things that sort of set us apart, but I think sort of both parties on both sides of the table are very interested in bringing this to a close. I think we had hoped that we would, we would have the contract in place sort of before the start of the, the school year, but we're going to go a little bit past. And, and hopefully meet in the middle where we need to be, to be successful for us and for the community.
Thank you. The floor is yours, Dr. Lyons.
Thank you very much. With your permission, I'd like to take my items out of order. I'd like to start off by just welcoming our student ambassadors, I'm Ed and Shay. Thank you so much for being here. I, I do know that we have Vanessa and Lauren, which will be here, I think maybe next time?
Yeah.
But thank you so much for being here, just for, to let people know who might be tuning in, just for background. Getting students back to the table to be part of school committee meetings has been quite a bit of work. And I know I'm Ed, you, you worked quite a bit with the Policy and Communications Subcommittee to advocate for this. So your hard work has paid off. So congratulations to you and Shay, welcome. It's great to have you. Thank you so much. I would also, I'd like to, in taking my items out of order, just like to, I see the students here and teachers that are here, I'd like to invite you all up to talk about the Swiss Exchange Program, maybe to get you right to the top of the list so that you don't have to sit and, and kind of wait for, for more announcements.
Thank you for having us. My name is Andrew Moody. I'm a teacher at the high school and one of the co-coordinators of our cultural exchange program. We've had a 20-year relationship with a school in Basel in Switzerland that predated even my time working at Wakefield High School. It's one that we're very, very proud of being able to keep up. I would be remiss if I wouldn't have an opportunity to say thank you to the school committee, to the Wakefield High School administration and to the greater student body in general. Not every foreign exchange program survived the long layup as a result of COVID. And the fact that ours was able to bounce back and here we have students and teachers with us from Switzerland is a, a big deal and demonstrates a big commitment that we don't take for granted. The program is such that we'll be hosting for two weeks in September and introducing students to what student life is in Wakefield, not only say things in and around Boston, but also what it means to attend a high school, go to football games, cheer on our volleyball team, things like this. In April, we'll be going abroad with 19 students and visiting our Swiss partners in a reciprocal situation where we'll be staying with families and have the opportunity to attend the Swiss High School and see things in and around what is a pretty unique spot in Europe, being about 15 minutes from both the French and German border. And so it really is a wonderful opportunity to be able to see a lot of different things, especially not as a tourist, but through the eyes of, through locals. And so what we'll do is we'll give the opportunity for Caroline McFarlane to talk a little bit about how the program's going so far. And then we're going to invite four students up to speak about what it's been like to host and to travel here in Wakefield.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm also very happy and pleased to be here and I'm very happy for this cultural exchange. We've been completing each other for years and years. When he's at our, our house, we host him and vice versa. And it's really a pleasure to be here. And it's so much more fun to see the people, to greet the people, to have such a welcoming community, you as a school, you as a committee, but also a great big thank you to all the host families and parents who host our lovely Swiss kids with the lovely American kids. We really appreciate it. And it's just something different, we noticed in the COVID situation. Four years of nothing is terrible and we're so glad to be back in the program. is terrible, and we're so glad to be back in the program. Yes, what do we do? I mean, of course, I'm a teacher, I'm also a program manager, and it's, yeah, I coordinate the trips here, and we do a lot of field trips here. Our Swiss kids enjoyed coming to your school and seeing how the real American experience is. They'll tell you more later on. And then after our school experience, we do a bunch of field trips, we do the Freedom Trail, and our school kids have presentations because they have certain topics in English, like geography, history, and so on, but they'll tell you more later on. Exactly, so we do the Freedom Trail, we go to Plymouth Plantation, we visit Harvard, we were able to go on a whale watch, so we don't have a lot of whales in Switzerland, no, just kidding. But yeah, so it's a wonderful cultural exchange, and I think it's an amazing opportunity to grow for our students. And yeah, often these friendships are there for years or even for lives. So we've had the experience, we came to Wakefield in 19, I think it was 2019.
That's right.
And then you wanted to come and join us in 20, and then some kids couldn't come, which was really a pity, but then they came individually, which was really nice. At least they could do that.
Yeah, that was a really heartwarming moment that the students whose 2020 trip was canceled, obviously, everything happened with the pandemic in March, our trip was scheduled for April, but one by one, over the past couple of years, I've been getting emails from American students who made it to Switzerland, took a picture with their exchange partner and really kind of consummated that experience, even though a few years later than expected. But let's allow you to hear from the students themselves as what a unique experience this has been, so.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
How do the Wakefield students get involved in the program?
What we do is we allow for a general application process for juniors and seniors. There's not a prerequisite to have taken a specific class or to enroll in a specific language. We obviously don't even offer Swiss German at the high school. But, you know, ideally, it's for students who are excited to travel. But there's other programs for students who just simply want to follow around a guide and take a relatively straightforward tour. I think our program attracts students who are kind of open-minded, open-hearted, care as much about the experience of the person they're hosting as their own experience. And so I think that we have lots of students who've had, myself and Ms. Lorenz in the past, perhaps have had some exposure to exchange students just sitting in lunch and/or attending like soccer practice. We have multiple students who are like the second and third sort of siblings in a specific family who have done our program, which is really amazing to think. One of our students, Catherine, had a Swiss exchange student when she was eight and is now has one of her own when she's 17, which is, you know, kind of a testament to the way that this program has become part of the community and something the kids can look forward to, even as they kind of work their way through the public school system.
It's awesome, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thanks.
So we'll pull up our students now.
We have some additional chairs, Andy.
Oh, yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Fiona Goodwin, I'm a senior at Wakefield High School.
My name is Alex Lee, I'm from Switzerland.
My name is Kiara Chris, and I'm a Swiss exchange student here.
My name's Alexis Nanzie, and I'm a senior at the high school. So, do you guys want to just talk about?
I mean, it has been amazing, the opportunity to come here and being greeted and welcomed by amazing families that are open to host us for a whole two weeks, and just getting to know them and spending time with them is amazing. I mean, the friendships that we kind of made here, I think they're amazing and I hope they will last. Yeah, would be great.
Yeah. I also really think it's been an amazing experience so far, experiencing the real American culture, going to football games, and yeah, it's been great fun so far.
Also the field trips, I mean, we can do stuff and see stuff we cannot see in Switzerland, like for example, the whales.
Yeah.
We don't have a lot of them. It was really amazing, we've done so much, we are up so early every day, but I mean, it's fine, we don't care because it's an amazing opportunity. I mean, not every student has this opportunity to travel to another continent for two weeks and stay there, get to know people, talk to people, see the country live within another culture. It's really amazing.
We'll note that Alex had an opportunity to part the Red Sea as Moses during the last football game.
Yeah, it's been great hosting them and being able to make new friendships with all the Swiss exchange students. We've had like welcome parties and we've got together on the weekends and stuff to do like different activities together. Like, we went to Spooky World in New Hampshire, and some people went apple picking at Connor's Farm, and it's just really great experiences getting to show them all our like New England and Boston culture.
I think hosting is just as much fun as traveling. I did the exchange program last year as well, and it's just, again, such an amazing opportunity that I'm really glad our school offers. It's really nice to be able to share like just my life with my partner and like show him around, show him what I see and sort of see my life through his perspective, and I'm excited to also go there and see his life.
So I might have missed this, but how many total exchange students are here?
Nineteen.
There's nineteen?
Yeah.
Then nineteen American students, so forty of us really, overall.
About forty, yeah.
Yeah.
And do you plan to go? Do the hosts plan to go, the same people? Okay, so.
Yes, an honorable vacation, we'll go to Switzerland with the same people.
You'll have to come back and tell us what it was like. Bring us chocolate, right?
Oh, yeah, I've gotten some chocolate already.
Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Kevin.
So what's the coolest cultural thing in America like that? I hate to put you on the spot, but if you had to pick one thing.
One thing?
One thing that you're gonna miss when you go back, or something you want to get to tell your friends back in Switzerland, what would it be?
Probably the big cities. We don't have like as these kind of big cities that are huge. I mean, our cities are big, but not that big, and you just have a huge variety of everything. Like, you have twenty different variations of Oreos, it's crazy. I mean, we have like two. It's amazing to try all the snacks that we don't have.
Yeah, I think so, too, everything here is on a far bigger scale, and also the variety of all of the different candies, et cetera. But I think the thing I'll miss most is that we don't have our own Moses.
I think I'm gonna miss my host sister.
What is, how much do you communicate outside of this trip? Like, when did you start sort of talking with each other or emailing or?
With the, like, we with our?
With your families, yeah.
I would say like?
August, with August.
Yeah, like two months, because we didn't even know what exact student will host us until, and like August, end of August. And then as soon as we got the name, we were like on Instagram and looking it up, and everyone, everyone wanted to, who do you have? How does she seem? How does he seem? It was very exciting moment, yeah.
Yeah, so we like saw, followed each other on Instagram and started like DMing each other, like, hi, how are you, like, what's your life like, like different, like everything about your life and just like what your interests are and everything, just learning more about each other.
If you're following each other on Instagram, are you like, I want to do that when I come? Like, I want to do this thing, I want to, I want that kind of Oreo.
Yeah, it was pretty much like that.
That's great. And when you said you did this last year, do you still communicate with, is it the same host family or is it a different host family this year?
It's different.
Do you still talk to last year's host family?
I do, actually, my exchange, my Italian exchange student's birthday was like two days ago, and we messaged back and forth.
Oh, that's great, that's great, awesome.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I'm curious for the two seats visiting, how would you compare and contrast on high school here that you've experienced? And then high school, obviously, back at home, or what they're gonna experience when they're visiting you? How similar or different is it?
I think the biggest difference is we don't really have these classes. We have like one class, which is a group of students, which is the group of students coming here, we are one class, and we move together as one, so we stay in the same group of students all the time, or most of the time. And we don't, we have an all-around education, so it's like we have thirteen subjects in a week, which means every day has different subjects and is, yeah, and the days are longer mostly. And we have an open campus, so it's like pretty much when we have lunchtime, we can go home and come back. So it's more like, yeah, kind of.
Like college here, more college here, more like their high school over there.
Interesting.
Yeah, I'd also say that, for instance, after school here, pretty much everyone has another set of hours doing some sort of sport. And for instance, back at home, Switzerland, it's not really affiliated with school, but we have the same kind of things, just they're separated.
Individual.
Yeah.
It's not organized by the school, so sports has pretty much nothing to do with school.
Yeah.
And also, we don't really have homework.
Oh.
Or not like the same. Well, not in the same extent as you do, and they don't get graded. Well, we have to study a lot. We have to study a lot, but we don't have like this.
We have a great education system, what I heard.
Excellent, thank you. You're welcome.
I have a question. What are you excited to get home to, besides like your family and friends? Like, what's one thing that you're like, yeah, I'm happy to leave that in America? I'm doing the opposite of Kevin, of what you're gonna miss.
Probably the cheese.
The cheese?
Yeah. Oh, he, the cheese here?
Yeah.
No, I miss his cheese.
You miss the cheese at home, yeah. Cheese here is not great. Okay, got it.
I don't know.
It's over-processed.
I mean, it's such a great time here, I didn't really think about home. Because it's really nice, I mean, we're so like doing stuff all the time, and it's great, like field trips and everything, we cannot really miss home, because it's, I mean, you would only miss home if it wasn't fun here, but it is. We really enjoy it.
You could phrase it like something you're excited to show your partner back in Switzerland.
Yeah. Probably my scouts and my friends.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did someone else open it, Kevin?
Yeah, sorry. Is there any opportunity, or has there been an opportunity? Because I know, like, you're coming to America, you're coming to like this one small like part of America, like you're in Massachusetts, you know, you're in New England. Was there ever an opportunity, I don't even know if you do, to travel around the country at all or not? I just didn't, I didn't know if that was ever.
I mean, for one, we have the sister state agreement between Switzerland or Basel and Massachusetts, so we're limited to your area, but you have so much to offer, and you'll see Little Basel has also a lot to offer. Medieval cities and the churches, and I think the means of transportation is very different, and I think the American kids will see that that's a major difference. So we bike to school, or we walk to school, or we take public transportation. And I think that's one of the major differences, that they're independent at an earlier age, because my girls, for example, who started going to kindergarten at the age of five on their own, right? So really on their own, not with any parents guiding them. So we put an effort there that they are autonomous at an earlier age.
Ahmed and Shay, do you have any questions for our guests?
You don't have to.
I mean, I've met Kiara, because Alexis is on my soccer team, and she came to a game with us when we were going to watch Duke versus BU, I think, yeah? BC. BC, oh, sorry, BC, and it was really fun to get to know like most of the things she was telling us about, like how they don't have sports, like it was interesting to like see the difference between like what we do and what they do. Yeah.
If you ever want to contribute, just raise your hand and that's, don't be shy.
So Alexis, have you walked to school every day to make it feel nice?
No, but it would take a long while from my house to the school, but I know, I'm excited to walk to school in Switzerland, so.
Well, you're not.
Or, yeah, her house is a little far from the school, so I'll take the public transport.
But I'm an exception, I'm an exception.
I want to thank you for coming, I think you've been amazing and have given us a lot to think about and how we plan our trips.
Thank you very much, and it's also a brass, really a big thank you back, we're very happy to be here. And we very much look forward to giving you that experience as well, so hosting you and showing you the Swiss life, the Swiss experience.
There might be more adults, Andy, trying to get on this trip.
I was gonna say, where do I start off?
Oh, I'm sure we'll take applications.
Raffle them off, give them a fundraiser. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well done.
Sure.
I'm Caroline Lorenz, I'm a teacher at the high school and the other coordinator for the program. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And this is my other call. We're both Caroline.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. So just before moving on, I'd like to just bring the committee's attention back to the words that Andy Moody spoke about, just this idea of, this is not a traditional, you know, go visit with friends and just observe culture, right? So this is a genuine exchange where students are immersed in each other's day-to-day, their day-to-day schedules, their interactions and relationships with their families and in their schools, and meeting their friends as well. So this idea about having a partner school is a different concept than just a group going to observe. And as a former school administrator, you know, we've directed trips both ways, and I think that this idea of an exchange for students is really, I think, it just pays just a wonderful dividend. Next up, I'd like to invite Meg Webb, who's gonna introduce her new teachers at Galvin Middle School.
Hello, it's lonely, it's just, it's just me here. We have open house on Thursday night, so most of our teachers are doing their late night that night.
Gotcha.
But I got some notes, so I can still shout them out, I think they're watching, I hope. So we welcomed six new teachers at the Galvin. They're all amazing, I would categorize kind of all of their hires as kind of just like a perfect alignment, like you find the right person at the right time for the right job, which felt really good. We had a couple of late openings, and even those positions, we filled with really incredible folks, so. We have David Lee, who's a sixth grade math teacher this year, he's a Wakefield alum, also an alum of UMass Lowell, and he did his Gen Ed and Special Education practical was at Dolbear, so lots of Wakefield connections, he's doing an awesome job. In addition to having open house, he's also sick today, first year teacher, he's like a real first year teacher, like, so he's got all the germs, but he's doing a great job and we wish him well. Carrie Cessoso is our new nurse, she's also a parent in the district, she has a daughter at the Galvin and one at the high school. And she is just awesome. She's just jumped right in. She's been a ER nurse, a floor nurse, a nurse that specializes in blood disorders. I know there's an official term for that, but she just brings a ton of experience, a lot of great kind of in-the-moment, able-to-problem-solve ability, given all her background in hospitals. So we love having Carrie. In a confusing turn of events, our other nurses also carry, and they spell it the same way, but we've worked it out, we figured it out. We have Luke Hanson, who joined us in STEM, and we hired him, he was one that, very late. It was just a late move into the elementary school for one of our teachers. But he was somebody that, it was a cool story. There was a teacher he worked with in New Hampshire who knew a staff member at the Galvin through some past, I don't know, professional experience, and said, I know this kid, he's moving down to the Boston area, he is just an amazing person. He's just, he'll be great for your staff, he's a great person for, for adult culture. And STEM is really hard to fill, it's a really quirky type of position. So we interviewed him, and he's just an incredible person. We said, have you ever like done a 3D printer? He said, no. Have you ever worked the saws and stuff? He's like, oh, my dad did a lot. And we're like, alright! So he's done a ton of training in the, in the interim, and he's, he's doing a great job. Joey Ganley, I say Ganley, but it's Ganley, is a new teacher in our Integrated Care and Learning Program, so called ICLP. She also just has incredible experience. She worked in Melrose and Winchester. She is an ABA, she's certified ABA, so working with students who need a really therapeutic approach, she has been just awesome. So we're excited to have her. Emma Bereznowitz, who I knew before she was married and her name was like one syllable, so I always struggle with her new last name. But she is working with us at the Galvin and also at the high school. She's an ESL teacher. She has many years of experience in Boston Public Schools, building ESL programming. Specifically, I know she's just incredible at pushing really high academic expectations while at the same time developing English language skills. So we're really excited to have her. She's also a new mom, so she is home with her little one today. Joey's also a brand-new mom, so a couple of new moms. And then Lauren McGeisik is our TLC counselor. She's a new puppy mom, which if you've had a puppy, you know, it's, no joke, it's a lot. So she comes to us from Essex Tech. She there, she did a lot of work around attendance, she did a lot of work with students who are considered at risk for many things, and she's already been awesome. So we're really excited about everyone, and I know they're out there watching, so glad to shout them out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Meg, before you go, do you mind if we, if I ask you to just stay and talk about cell phones?
Sure. You ready? Well, actually, I was gonna say, can we let the high school teachers, because they gotta, they get up earlier even at night. And we'll be right here, though. We'll jump right back up. Sorry.
Amy?
Hi, everybody. How's everybody doing? I'm really excited to talk about the new high school teachers this year. We have six, also six new high school, uh, teachers at the high school. I have to say, overall, and I feel like this group of teachers, in all of my years hiring, not only here, but in the places that I've been before, I've never had a group of teachers who've come in and hit the ground running like this group this year. So they come in with a wealth of experience. We don't have any new, new teachers, but even still, they have acclimated so quickly. They are so excited to be here, and we are really thrilled to have them on the team. So first, I'd like to introduce Lauren Arsenal, who's one of our special educators. Do we make the stand-up? What are you? Very awkward. Sorry. So Lauren comes to us, actually, Lauren was living in Illinois when we hired her, but she is local, she went to Keene State. And it was really fun to kind of interview her while she was in the Midwest, but we knew she was moving back and we were really happy to scoop her up. She's supporting classes in math and science for special education, and she's also doing some, you know, pull-out LSC classes. So we're really happy to have her here. We also are sharing, Emma Bereznowitz, I'm showing off my pronunciation for Meg. So I'm gonna claim that she is here also helping at the high school. It's been amazing to have an additional ELL split from Galvin to the high school, so I want to thank you for that position. It's made a huge help to support some of our math and science teachers. And Emma is just, you know, fitting in and supporting teachers right away, and we're all so psyched to have her. Colin Halpin is here, one of our new health and wellness teachers. So Colin is not new to the high school because he is our high school varsity basketball coach. So it's really great, you know, Colin's had a passion for wellness and healthy living and healthy lifestyles, and it's so great to see him integrate that into a classroom, and it's also great to have our coaches in the building, because it's really nice for our student athletes to have that presence there, and then also see the academic side of Colin, and sort of be that role model for them, both in the classroom and on the court. So we're thrilled to have Colin with us. Next, I'd like to introduce Eric Helmer, who's behind me. Eric is one of our new science teachers. He had big roles, big shoes to fill when our physics teacher left, who had been, Mr. Canal had been with us for many years. But Eric has stepped in very nicely and comes to us with a lot of experience from Lynn English. So it's a very different community being here at Wakefield from, from Lynn English, and having come from Lowell myself, Eric and I have had a few good conversations about the differences of coming to a suburban school. But we are so thrilled to have him as well. He's got a great team supporting him, and he has, he is bringing much, as much to the table to support his new team as they are given to him, so we're, we're thrilled to have him here. Our last two hires are our two adjustment counselors. We hired two new adjustment counselors this year. First, we hired Justine Thomas, who is a Wakefield resident, and she has students, she has children at the Galvin. And we hired her from Woburn, and, and we were thrilled to get her to come over and work with our new, our expanded bright program, our bridge program, which has expanded this year. And once we hired her and saw what a great fit she was, we immediately had another position become available, and she said, hey, I have a friend who, at Woburn, who I think would like to come, sorry, to the Woburn schools, even though I'm not because we got them so excited. And so then Dylan Scott also came over, and Dylan is an adjustment counselor working with the PAL program. And I have to say about the two of them, not only are they collaborating with each other, but they are gonna work with the, you know, the most needy populations at the high school, the folk, the kids who really need them day in and day out. And they were here early, they were setting up each other's offices and classrooms, and they are just jumping right in and taking on the work. And there's really a different feel in the building with them here, and we're thrilled that we're here. So shout out to, if any of them are watching, but we're, we're so excited that they're all here, so thanks.
Before you go, because I know you guys are both on the agenda twice, right, so we're trying to do in like double duty.
Yeah.
Can you talk about NIASK?
Yes. Can I excuse my teachers so they don't?
Of course.
Welcome. Welcome again.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks for joining.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Um, yeah, so I'll just give a really quick update around NIASK. I know that Doug and Kara shared with you the letter, so we had a great visit in December. I know, I think I was here last year talking about the visit a little bit and how great the faculty was in terms of working together and putting together the work for the NIASK team. So we did get the report back over the summer, and the good news is that we are continuing to be accredited. I know everybody was worried about that, so we are accredited, and we are also continuing on probation for some of the standards. So I think it was a really well-balanced report. I was able to meet with the team, the, the NIASK team over the summer to come in and preview the report and talk about it a little bit, and they felt that the visit itself and what they saw in the school was very balanced. Some of the things that they commended on, commended us on that I want to highlight, that you saw in the letter, are the positive student-teacher relationships, which I think are so evident when you come in the building. They did also want to sort of commend the, the culture of, which is really important to me, the culture of risk-taking that they saw. And they see that not only in our classrooms, but in our extracurriculars. And they talked about the relationships with the community, the relationships that students have with one another, and then really just this idea of getting students to be hands-on, hands-on learners. And they're seeing that more and more across the building, that's something that we've been working on, so I'm glad that that's standing out. They also saw a lot of opportunities for you guys as students to present your work to authentic audiences, right? So getting you to do more of this stuff, where you come and, and sort of present and, and show your learning, which is really important to us. And they also talked about some of the programs for our specialized populations, which ironically, I just talked about our new hires, right? So they're really seeing that we're building more specialized programs in places for all students to be successful. So one of the areas that they obviously want us to continue working on, and so NIASK is a little bit different now. What they do is they establish with you your priority areas for growth. So they basically said, as Doug previewed last year, you know, that you will continue being accredited, and we are gonna work with you for the next two years along what your priority, priority areas of growth are. So obviously, the biggest priority area of growth is the new building. And so they were thrilled to see the plans, they were happy to hear all the work that's going into it, and I keep them updated with that work every six months. I write in, just a six-month update to let them know what's going on with the priority areas, so that will be one of them. The second priority area is that they, they are looking to have a consistent written format for our curriculum across all classes at the school. So knowing that you all see the program of studies and how many courses we offer at the school, you can imagine how difficult that is it, to get the same exact format in every single class across the school. I don't think universities do that, and so to ask a high school to do that is, is a little bit of a challenging task. However, we've taken that on already, with the help of Karen, the curriculum coordinators, and some of our teachers. In the spring and over the summer, they've been in already working on that, and it's not really changing the maps dramatically. It's just making them look aligned in the format. And the, the positive work that's gonna come out of that is we're hoping to have public-facing curriculum documents in place by the end of this year, at least for all of our core content area classes, if not more. So that's an, an area of growth that's in progress. The last one that we started in on the end of the year, and we've kind of paused over the summer in getting started up, that we will continue on this year, is creating a vision of, of the graduate. That is something that NIASK has kind of taken on in the last five years or so. Ten years ago or prior to that, if any of you are familiar with the NIASK process, we used to do core values or, or vision statements or mission statements, and these were sort of like empty sentences that when everybody came in, the NIASK team wanted to hear teachers kind of chant, right? Be like, the vision, right? And they mean something, but they need to sort of take on an embodiment. And so now what they focused on is to say, okay, now you have your vision, which we talk about and we use, let's now focus on our, our students and our graduates, and what will they look like when they graduate? And so we're gonna need to do that work not only with us at the high school, but we'll be pulling in the middle school for that work, and eventually the elementary school, so that we, as a district, should have a pre-K to post-vision of what our graduates look like when they leave our public schools. That one's gonna take longer, just, just to be honest. I mean, I know the school building should take longer. I think the school building is probably an easier task than a vision of the graduate, because we're gonna have to get a lot of input from stakeholders, from students, from parents. We've gotten a lot of input from faculty, but that is something that we'll be working on in the next few years. So you have the letter. Doug will be sharing the full report at some point. This will be made public, we'll put it on our website. And if you have any questions about the report or want to know more about it, I'm always happy to meet and talk about it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. The Portrait of a Graduate work is going to be exciting, and we'll be able to report more on that. And like Amy had just said, that she's gonna be doing some work with Meg at the middle school, and we're also thinking about what that might look like at elementary school. So we're thinking a lot about what skills and dispositions will kids have when they leave elementary, what skills and dispositions will they have when they leave middle, what skills and dispositions will they, will they have when they leave the high school? So it takes, takes a little bit of work and coordination there, and really indebted to Amy and her team in regard to the new employees that we've hired this year. We have twenty-two new teachers district-wide. And I think that the principals have done an amazing, amazing job hiring, so we can't thank them enough for that. We've really hit the ground running in that space. Next up, I'd like to invite Meg back. I know everyone's doing double duty to the table to talk a little bit about the cellphone grant, and to just talk about what the grant is, what it isn't, and, and why we're kind of looking to add this layer.
Thank you. Yeah, so you know me, this is Matt Army, who works for Yonder, which is the organization that we're partnering with to implement the cellphone pouches. So I think I'll talk a little bit about kind of how we got here, the why, and then I'll pass it over to Matt to talk a little bit about how it works operationally, and then you guys can ask some questions. So for a few years now, we've been working as an administrative team to try to figure out how can we best support kids kind of in all aspects of their experience at the school. One of the major issues that we see, particularly at the middle school age, is students who have an incredible amount of technology at their fingertips, but don't necessarily have the developmental, um, I guess, they're just not old enough, really, to, to know exactly how to use that responsibly all the time. That's been most clear in incidents of bullying, posting things that probably they wouldn't, their older selves wouldn't want to see posted photographs that are regrettable, and things that are happening during the school day that are distracting from learning and distracting from a feeling of safety and a feeling of welcomeness across the school. So we were wrestling this, for this, for a while. There is a, a policy that's been in place since, I think for about the last eight years, around cellphones being out of, out of hand, in lockers, turned off. But that policy, if you think eight years ago, what technology was like, even for us, we have outgrown it in some ways. We need more resources for students to be able to really engage with the purpose of that policy, which is to stay focused on healthy relationships and on learning in the classroom. So we're not alone, it turns out. This is a huge movement, I would say, across schools, so much so that Desi, over the summer, put out a grant for innovative approaches to curbing cellphone use in schools. And so we, we applied for the grant, and we heard back from Desi that they had double the amount of interest that they anticipated. They were looking to raise more funds, and they did raise more funds, and then were able to let us know that we received the grant. So there were different avenues you could take with the grant in terms of how you were going to think about containing cellphone use. Some of them we sort of steered away from because they involve teachers collecting all of the cellphones or putting them maybe in a locker or in a kind of a cellphone hotel of sorts. But those of you who are teachers or have taught, you know, that's an incredible amount of responsibility for you. It's a huge amount of money for you to be responsible for in terms of what those cellphones represent to students. And so that wasn't something our teachers were really interested in pursuing, and it made sense to us. When we came across the Yonder organization, it was through other principals that I've worked with who have implemented it in their schools and had some great things to say about it in terms of what it's done for student engagement, for student safety, for a decrease in the amount of bullying, harassment, and just kind of meanness happening through text message and other things during the school day. So that's kind of the why and how we arrived where we are. I would love for Matt to talk a little bit about what it is exactly, so you can get a better sense of that.
Hey, everybody. I'm Matt. This is the Yonder pouch. I'll just show you how it works real quick. This is the base. See this green circle? Green means go. Tap it, it opens. Students in the morning time are gonna be asked to put power their phone off, put their real phone, their fake phone, their Apple Watch and their AirPods all in the pouch, close it up, put it in their backpack. At the end of the day, they'll pass by a base, tap, open, take their technology out, put the pouch back in their backpack. Just a little bit of background about Yonder and myself. I don't know if you all knew this, but Yonder was actually created for adults. Our first clients were artists like Chris Rock, who else, another big one? Kevin Hart, Madonna, maybe you all have heard of Beyoncé, just, just a few, to, to rattle them off. So I was trained to work, to implement Yonder in venues from five thousand to ten thousand people in capacity. And what I saw was that it's insane to me how grown adults could not keep their phone away during a two-hour comedy show. So if that's the case, what is the, and I'm sorry, I'm not a math person, but what's the math teacher supposed to do? Because it's not as fun as going to a comedy show, right? Maybe the math teacher should even put their own phone in a pouch as well to kind of model the behavior. Because I think what a lot of people don't really understand about Yonder is that we're not punitive in any way, shape, or form. We don't work with schools who do anything other than a tier-one intervention. Meaning, every student gets a pouch, they put their name and grade on it, it's theirs for the whole year. They can decorate the pouch, they can do whatever they want to the pouch. Just don't break it or lose it, bring it to school every day. So I'll just take, that's just kind of brief overview, and I'll dive into the slides a little bit. So again, just to reiterate, Yonder was created for adults. And you'll see Chris Rock right there, who I just mentioned. Also, another really interesting one is Serena Williams. We actually made a phone-free wedding for her. We actually made a phone-free wedding for her. Her husband is the co-founder of Reddit, one of the world's largest social media sites. I find it quite interesting that people who make this technology are actually carving spaces out of their day to get away from it. So here are some great stats, just like kind of what schools see after implementing Yonder. Anecdotally, I will tell you three points. Day one is going to be a little bit awkward for the students because they're really going to have to make a lot of eye contact. They've been doing this for the past five years. It's a very, very, very new thing for anybody to have to do. So, you know, day two, what do we see? Students are a little bit more active in the cafeterias, which is a really, really cool thing to see. Going to a school before and after Yonder, it's like nobody even realizes anybody exists in the cafeteria. Nobody's talking to each other. It's very ominous and a little bit not so inviting. But the third part is conflict resolution. Because students have to talk to each other, they can't just hide in the bathroom and say the most rude things on planet Earth about and to each other, day after day after day, hour after hour. To be quite honest, I know none of you all are going to believe me necessarily, but the most positive feedback I get about Yonder is from students, which is crazy. You all would probably think that kids wouldn't like this. And they don't for the first two weeks because we really have to kind of rework how the brain is starting to like process information, right? So over 2,000 schools across the country are phone-free. Massachusetts, last year alone, and just Massachusetts, we implemented at about 40 schools. This year, looks like that number's probably going to triple. Just in the next two, in the next three weeks, we will be implementing at 26 schools across the state. Some of the larger districts we work with, Holyoke, Massachusetts. Every school in Holyoke currently uses Yonder. East Boston High uses Yonder. The English High School uses Yonder. And about 20 other Boston Public Schools use Yonder. Also, I'm not sure if you all saw the WBUR article that was just released about Salem High School, which actually started with their middle schools. The most proud district I am to be working with is actually Providence Public Schools, where every single middle school in Providence currently uses Yonder. And we started with their largest school, Nathaniel Green Middle School. And the feedback that I've heard from every single principal is that students are happier, school is safer, and people are learning more. And it's coming to fruition in their test scores. Daily process, already kind of mentioned that, but again, I'll go through it. Green is go. Tap to open. Take your phone out at the end of the day. And the beginning of the day, you're going to put it right in, close it, pop it in the backpack. For a typical school, for example, Chickapie Comp High School with 1,300 students, our day-one implementation of getting the pouches to all the students, showing them how it works, took 15 minutes for all 1,300 students. Nobody was late to class. To exit the building, same school, from last bell ringing to last bus leaving the property was nine minutes. Yonder actually makes your dismissal time faster because students really, really, really want to open up these pouches at the end of the day. The only way to open them up is at the exit. So, you know, people are a lot more motivated to leave at the end of the day. This is just very brief. Day one is your intro day. Pouches are going to be distributed right at the front door as students come in. Essentially, there's going to be an adult outside. Hey, students, please turn your tech off, take it out. We're going to put it in the pouch for them, hand it right back. And they're going to write their, you know, first, last name and grade level. Day two, we're going to check each pouch, make sure they're in good working order. If a student breaks or loses the pouch, we're just going to hold on to it for the day, kind of just mirroring the policy that you all already have in place. I'm going to skip a couple of slides just to save some time. Okay, this is really, really, really important. Already mentioned it, but the students here are going to be going through a very real psychological change. Again, they've been really used to their phones the whole time of really being in school. So it's so important for adults in the building to model that behavior with this Velcro pouch. Also, students who have, for example, maybe diabetes and have to check their levels can also use the Velcro pouch as well. I think I just have one or two more slides. Yeah, this is one of my favorite parts of the job is seeing all the cool student art, pouch art. We really pride ourselves on kind of like helping students understand the fun parts about Yonder. For example, we actually love to print out posters of student art and then send it back to the school. And with high schools that we work, we actually hire students to work Yonder shows, which is a really cool way for students to kind of see that Yonder actually helps people have fun. So that's all I have for you today. Love to hear any feedback, questions, or, you know, anything at all that I can address. Thank you so much.
Can you pass, could we see the pouches?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Let me just take my phone out.
I just want to clarify that there is no cellphone policy. I've searched through every single handbook for Galvin. There's no cellphone policy. There might be a rule that's been verbally said. There is no cellphone policy for Galvin.
I can speak to that.
At all.
I can speak to that. And so in 1718, in the handbook, there was the language that was described earlier. And when it was moved into a Google Doc, that language didn't come over. I don't know why it didn't come over. And so the handbook is not a policy. Policy is a policy. Policy is made by school committee, right? So the handbook is guidance and rules that the students need to follow, right? And so the comments that were made tonight about, you know, there needing to be language, I don't disagree with that. I think that there does need to be language put back into the handbook. So there's agreement there. And I think that that's something that can be remedied very quickly. That's my own two cents. But I also hope that starting this conversation about cellphones with Meg and with the rep from Yonder and some background on the grant can address some of the questions that have come up earlier.
I have a lot to say, but I'm going to wait for everyone else to say.
I'll today.
Well, oh, let's go.
So, well, I'll just ask a simple one. How many of those, whatever things, the magnet? How many of those, like Salem High School, for example, like how many of those exist at the entrance? It's just like, I think one concern that parents have is like how long it would take for everyone to get out. You just said it would take nine minutes. So just like intuitively, like I think that's like a concern in terms of like if there's just like one thing that every student has to press it on. Is, are there like multiple, like?
Typically, for a school, if I'm mistaken, Galvin's around 1,100 students, correct? Somewhere around there. So I would say about one for every, really bad at math, but about one for every 200 students is our guidance. But essentially, we want to have enough for like for that and then some floaters throughout the schools. Like one for your main office, and one for the admin team, nurse, school counselors. Those are important, right? Just making sure that all the major stakeholders in the school have access to it and/or, you know, just know the basic procedures behind it. Please, student question. Thank you.
Yeah, so I actually used to go to the Salem Public School system for middle school. And I've heard a lot about these Yonder pouches. So just, you know, disclaimer, I can't. I can only speak for myself. I would have to speak with the rest of the student body to give their opinion on it. But from what I've seen from Salem High School, the pouches haven't really been kind of integrated as much. Like students don't really like them. It was a huge curve, especially in Salem Public School District where phones were a huge, like humongous issue worse than the Galvin. And the pouches have been, I would say, broken. Or have been, you know, people have been offering services to unlock the pouches. Although I don't really know what I feel about the pouches for the middle schoolers or potentially they're going to be implemented elsewhere within the Wakefield Public School District. All that I can say is that I think there might need to be some changes in the system or maybe especially because parents are concerned about emergency services. If there was even a way, as I know these are magnetic, to have maybe magnets that you would give to parents to unlock their phones at home or something of the sorts. Also that, again, this isn't a foolproof system, although it will deter use of cellphones. The people that you're really trying to target here, the people that have misused these cellphones, will find ways to open them and will find them very quickly.
So there's a lot to unpack in that question. I'll start with damage. First and foremost, I really appreciate it when students damage their pouches because it means that they're thinking critically about the problem and trying to, you know, do something creative with their time. Part of the Yonder program is to give schools free pouch replacements. So it's like super easy to tell when somebody has broken their pouch. And if that happens, we just hold on to the phone for the day and then give the student a new pouch. And if it happens again, best practice is always to hold the phone for the day until parent or guardian can come pick it up. So, yeah, definitely expect damage everywhere, at every school. It's something that happens. In terms of Yonder holistically, you know, the best way to think about it is as a time management tool. You know, if there's any educators, you know, at the table here, I think for any tier-one intervention, to have around 90% compliance in the first two days is pretty unheard of. That's pretty much what we see at just about every school. For example, in Holyoke Public School, I think the highest, you know, damage and forgotten rate was about 9% throughout all of the schools in Holyoke. Same thing can be said with just about every other district. So again, you know, those last 10% of students that are really having issues with the Yonder pouch, we're here to work with and figure out what's going on. This just makes it like a much easier transition for everybody because phones are just so pervasive. Everybody has one. We're not here to say who's good at a phone is bad at a phone. We're just here to kind of apply something.
Can I say one more thing to that question? Because I think a series of questions that were good questions. I think anytime you adopt a new resource or a new support for students, it's not a silver bullet, as we say in education. Probably other fields, it's not going to fix everything. And that's not the purpose. The purpose is to do better for kids by having a tier-one intervention that all students can access in an appropriate way. And then, yes, then figure out like what's, where are the holes in this? Who's still making poor decisions? And then what do we do there? It's kind of a question of any sort of resource you would ever introduce into a building, for sure. So I think those questions are spot on for anyone who's either worked in a school or been a student in a school. That, you know, the idea isn't that overnight no one's trying to get at their cellphones or no one's making decisions that we wish they didn't using technology, but that we're giving kids another resource to just help them to learn to use things responsibly. And I think you made a great point. I think the carving out space away from technology. I look forward to my Velcro pouch because I also too often look at my phone, get distracted, thinking about this, but then I start thinking about that. So I think there's something to it in terms of providing a space where we can actually just do what we're there to do, for sure. And I'm sorry, you were about to ask a question.
Just around the, like the 90% sort of number, it just got me curious about what is, is there any data on the current compliance with rules in place at these sort of schools or in our school? In terms of if we're talking numbers, you know, you're having a 90% success rate. Is that 90% compared with like you used to have 90% of kids that would comply with the existing rule to put your phone away? Because of course, they'll comply.
It would be kind of hard to quantify, I think, right? Because you would never have a real record of who's following the rules and who's not, just who's getting caught and who's not. Whereas with Yonder, it's everybody is held to the same standard and expectation. So we're really not dealing with the so-called good kids, bad kids. We're just dealing with phones and pouches at the end of the day.
Okay, and but so, okay. But so there is no data collection on sort of what the schools, like?
Stephen, can I? I think I might be able to answer your question. Maybe I can, but I could try. I think it'd be impossible to get clear data on that. But I don't know if you'd agree with me on that for this simple reason. It's definition of terms. So if a kid's in my class and they're on their phone, and I say, hey, put your phone away. Kid puts their phone away. Is that a violation of the policy? Well, yeah, the kid took the phone out. But if I like, would you mark that as a violation? I mean, if the kid just complied right away, I'm just like, cool, let's go. But you know what I'm saying? But it is a violation. So if we're talking about 90%, like and you were talking about like kids in Salem violating it, it kind of means like, what do you mean by definition? Now, if the kid keeps doing it two, three times in a class, I think we could all agree that's a violation. Like we could all agree that's going to mess with the kid's education. So it's kind of like, it's kind of like, how would you define what that success is? And I think your point is that with Yonder, it makes that there's no like loosey-goosey definition of, oh, what are we, like what's compliance? Like it's in the pouch or it's not in the pouch, you know? And I think it makes it easier to define success versus failure just because you're kind of, it's either X or Y.
I would agree, but I think if we were applying the rules consistently across the board, then it would be an easier sort of measure. I'm not saying that that's easy to do. I'm just saying if we were, if there is a rule that exists and we followed it across the board, then you would get a better sense of what that number is. then you would get a better sense of, of what that number is.
So I, I hear you and I, I think that that's a point that's been made, right? And so if there are rules, they, they should be followed and there should be consequences, right? And I think what we're seeing in practice is that it's, it's not the rule followers and it's not in class. It's really often during unstructured times, right? And students, this is what, I say this without judgment. Students communicate with their phones by sharing text, pictures and video. There are things that come into their phone and go out of their phone and they, they, they often don't create the content. But there are things that, you know, they probably shouldn't have on their phone, right? And so, um, and, and we're seeing during these unstructured times when, you know, there, there's been some, some issues, right? And so that kind of joined with the effects of, of cell phones and social media that we're seeing that's being published now on, on children. I think this is an added layer, like Meg says, that the school is trying to, to kind of think outside the box a little bit. This grant came late, came late in the summer. Um, and, and I think, um, I, I feel like as I was listening to the parents in, in our public comment, I was thinking to myself, it, it's unfortunate, we missed an opportunity. If you have to come to public comment to comment on something that we haven't discussed yet, then we've missed an opportunity to talk about this at, at the school level, right? With parents to talk more about it, to talk, to troubleshoot a little bit more, to, to be clear about, you know, the challenges and what we're trying to do. You know, I, I think like Meg said, we're trying to just create a layer to make it a little bit better. We're not trying to be the cell phone police. We're not trying to make it, um, impossible for kids to use their phones, you know? And so this is just kind of a step that the Department of Ed is saying, you know, we know social media is having a negative impact on kids. We know that kids communicate with pictures, text and video. Sometimes it's content that they create. Most of the time it's not, it's just a pass through, right? Um, you'll hear adults often say things like, hey, when I was fourteen, if I had a cell phone and could have recorded everything that went on, yikes. You know, it's, it's only more complicated now for students. Very difficult for students. It's very, very difficult and kids are reaching for their phones to see, you know, who's doing what, to see what's happening socially, to see, you know, who has said what or who is doing what or, and it's creating this kind of parallel. Um, and, and companies are great at it. Companies are expert at keeping eyes on screens, right? TikTok works, right? You know, and so, and the, and I, not to pick on TikTok, but these things work, right? And so we're just trying to, to understand and learn in, in an educational institution about how might we better just support kids, right? And so that's, that's kind of the intent and I don't want to speak completely for you, Meg, but please.
No, I think you captured it well. I think, um, and this doesn't answer your question cleanly about the data, but if I had to say how much of counselor and administrative time is spent on issues related to cell phone use? I would say it's ninety percent of what we deal with in terms of either student anxiety, student conflict, bullying. The bullying reports, I'm sure we could pull up and see how many of them are, are rooted in issues. Someone posted this online, someone created a mock account of me and did this. This picture got sent to all of these different people. All these kids wrote, don't sit with me at lunch, like during, in the bathroom when they went for the bathroom break and then no one sat with me. Just all of these things that create an unsafe feeling for kids. Um, that yes, a pouch is not gonna fix all that, right? Cause there's still, I mean, we passed notes when I was a kid, right? And most of us and, and our time and, and there were still things that were hurtful. But the rate at which it can travel now across a school, across a community is really hard for kids. Um, so it won't fix it because you can do some of that after school, right? But, um, it'll keep it from happening during school time or at least reduce it greatly, which then frees up your counselors to do, um, a lot more kind of real time work with kids. So I think, I think the, the purpose of it is not, again, to eradicate phone use entirely, but it's to, to make school a safe and supportive place where kids can focus on learning. And I think there are many opportunities, but part of the letter that we shared, um, has back to school night, which will have the pouches for people to test out. Um, and then a Zoom meeting for parents, um, early in October.
I think, uh, who's next? Go ahead, Pete.
So when I first heard about it, I definitely would say as a parent, my first feedback was sort of negative. I mean, my kids are definitely in the, if someone tells me to put my phone away and in my locker, that's where it is. As, as you met with the PTO, I know you were generous with your time, you met with the, with the Policy and Communication Subcommittee to talk about it. The thing that I think resonated with me was A, hearing about just the struggles kids are having in school as a result of, of having these phones in their pockets and, and just doing mean things with them. But the thing that made me feel a little more comfortable as a parent is I was thinking about that emergency situation that I think I, I heard a lot of parents talk about. And, and you know, you take the worst case scenario, which you, you hope it never happens in Wakefield, but if it does, you know, what are you gonna do? And I, and I thought, and I said, I would much rather have my phone on my kid where they can just destroy this pouch because it's not bulletproof. I don't mean to use the word bullet, it was not intentional, but you can cut the thing open, you can, you know, jab it with a pencil. You know, the thing can be opened up and it's on your body potentially, if that's where you want to store it versus the alternative. And I realized the policy wasn't, or implementation wasn't necessarily documented, but kids were previously told that their phone had to be in their locker, which is effectively, if you're following that, it's completely inaccessible. Uh, and there's no way, you know, if something bad is happening in the hallway, you're not gonna be able to go to your locker to get it. So, you know, that was one thing that I would say made me feel a little more comfortable about it, knowing this isn't Fort Knox, the thing can be broken open. Um, and that my kid would have their device on them in case of some severe emergency. And I do know there are phones in all the rooms, the staff all have cell phones. Um, I, I have a bunch of questions though, and I'll, I'll ask some of them and then maybe pass the ball around so I don't take the whole time. So echoing what someone else had said, I mean, clearly, um, we do need to make sure that this new implementation shows up in the handbook. Um, so I, I think it's just rhetorical, but I, I assume that will be in there. Um, the next question I had is if a family decides, and, and the question is, can they decide for non-medical reasons to opt out their child from the program? And if the answer is yes, what does that opt out look like for their child and their phone or watch?
Um, opt out would just be for documented.
Opt out from participating in the yonder.
Yeah, medically documented and that I know can mean a lot of different things, um, so it would be case by case.
Yeah, so my question was if they don't have a medical documentation and they just say, I do not want my kid's phone to be locked away in a yonder pouch. Is there any, um, alternative for them? Or is the only alternative that they can't bring their phone to school if they, if they don't want to participate in the program?
Yeah, I think as a tier one intervention, it's, it's universal, except in case by case. Someone is, anyone is more than welcome to reach out to me, uh, to Andrew, to Aaron, to just like, I just need to talk about this. Can we talk through it? We are, we are open doors, so we can, we can talk through that.
But the, but an accommodation to the tier one would be the Velcro pouch.
But, but that's only for, for children that have a medical or, you know, disability that requires that. That doesn't allow a parent who says, who says.
They not opt out to that?
How could they not opt out?
How, how, how is that not allowed that they can't opt out? That's like a four hundred dollar phone that may be locked in for a weekend. Um, and apparently it's supposed to be a good thing. I would like to see how it can be broken open in an emergency. I don't know if you can.
Just scissors.
But in an emergency situation, is a child gonna actually, gonna be able to, guys, give me the scissors so we can all one by one open it up?
Yeah, just in terms of the emergency situation, like I really am going to defer to first responders to work with us quite diligently and happily to implement yonder into schools because it's safer. Um, schools are using Title IV money, which is safer schools and drug-free schools in order to, um, you know, find funds to get yonder. Um, I was in, oh geez, suburban, suburban school, Northbridge, and, um, the SRO School Resource Officer, um, pretty much have like the most like passionate response to a parent that, you know, I don't think it's appropriate for me to say because I'm not a first responder, but essentially you want one channel of data coming in and out of the school during an emergency. So that way first responders can accurately handle and assess that situation. Um, so again, you know, like I'm not a first responder. I can't talk too much in depth about that, but all I can say is that every single district I work with, the first people are like, I can't wait for this to happen, is a school resource and security officers. So that hopefully will help quell a little bit.
And I think also just to Pete's point, I, the, the current procedure is that phones are in lockers. So this actually keeps a phone with a student, which is different.
Is the kids getting to the police, it's the kids getting to the parents. I can, I can, I can, if you've talked to any parent who has talked to their kid during a school shooting, they are happy they were able to talk to their kid or any kind of emergency, even if it's like worst case scenario. I mean, we've all heard the recordings from some of these schools shootings and they're, I mean, they're horrific, but at least they were able to talk to their parent to calm them down. It's not about getting to the police at that point, it's about hearing from their loved one. Um, so that Ted, to me, that's, that's, that's.
I know this could be really unpopular, but I was a teacher in an active shooter drill last year. The police yelled at teachers that didn't have their kids have the phones off. And the reason is an active shooter, they don't want kids to be contacting their parents during an active shooter drill. And I know every parent cannot believe that because every parent thinks they need to know when that's happening. But the police told us the, the drill is, Alice Drill, whatever drill, don't do it. Now, this is not, I mean, this is a police thing, right? Don't, don't yell, don't yell at me. I mean, I'm just telling you what, you know, we got yelled at as teachers, just want you to know, like talk to, talk to the police, talk to, I mean, that's, that's what the first responders have created as a policy, like you just said. And I, and I know what you just said is intuitive. I, I know, but like that's.
I wanna be able to talk.
Just wanna make sure the facts, as far as I know, that's the fact. I mean, unless I was yelled at, yeah, well, I wasn't yelled at, but someone else was yelled at appropriately. I'm pretty sure that's, I'm pretty sure that's standard in terms of what.
Cause I don't think they want the parents all flying down to the scene.
No.
No, they want to control the flow of information.
Jam those cell lines so the first responders cannot be in constant communication with the school on the active.
Yeah. So if I could make a suggestion, right? I, I think from, I, I'm feeling like we gotta slow this conversation down a bit and learn more about it, right? And address questions that have been asked, right? And give people time and space to kind of process this. And I think one of the groups that is not here, that we haven't heard from are SROs, right? That, that might be able to help us. And so, and, and just, and it might be helpful to also maybe hear from a school administrator who's doing this, right? I know Ahmed is talking about Salem, you know, Steve Dreyk is a former superintendent who is a colleague, right? And so, and he's the former superintendent of Wakefield and he's someone that we can reach out to. He was in Holyoke as well. So he can provide the Holyoke perspective as well as the Salem perspective. It's a different district, right? So we gotta, it's, you know, an urban district is different than a suburban district and there are similarities and differences. But I think just trying to answer questions and, and understanding more about this, like this is not a race to, to implement this tomorrow, right? This is about just trying to make a layer of something better than what we have. That, that's, I want to be clear about what we're trying to go for here. So if that means we need to slow down and, and work with our SROs and give people time and space to talk about this, to address questions, that, that's what I would like to suggest. I'm happy for any feedback that anybody has on that.
Doug, that's also, I completely agree, it's by design in terms of how the, the letter that we sent out is the first step of a, of a process in terms of communicating and meeting with different folks. We've, I've met with smaller groups prior to this and there are more meetings to come. So I think we can add to that in terms of those other stakeholders who want to hear from, I think it works perfectly.
Absolutely, yeah.
In, in terms of cost, so the initial, um, cost is borne by this grant, what does this look like projected out? In terms of when will the grant funding stop and then what is that to the district?
So I can speak to the grant funding and then you can talk maybe a little bit more about the, um, the company. But, um, so the, the grant is for this year and then they, they've already said they plan to, to kind of issue the grant again, so we could apply again for sustaining funds. Um, and they, they were able to meet the, the demand for all the, all the folks who applied for the grant. And it's something that I know the department is really committed to, so it's something that we will continue to apply for. The, the biggest cost is upfront in terms of, um, installation, training, all of the materials for eleven hundred kids. So it's a per pupil cost, um, and then it's less every year because we're just replacing and then as new kids come in, um, getting more pouches. But I don't know if you want to speak a little bit more to the.
Yeah, typically schools, um, I guess I'll use a real life example, like Chicopee Public Schools, they started with their high school. Um, they went over to their comprehensive high school. And then that was about a year and a half ago and they just signed a three-year agreement with us. So when schools enter in or districts enter in multi-year agreements with us, that's when they see, you know, um, real financial longevity and sustainability with the program. Um, and there's also just, you know, outside of Title I and Title IV funding, there's a ton of federal and state level grants that, you know, always willing to help you all figure out how to apply for.
So just, um, what is the cost per pouch, let's say?
We, uh, it's per student, so for, oh geez, I just don't want to give you all the right, wrong information because it's around nine and my brain's fried. But eleven hundred, I would say about nineteen dollars per head.
Okay, so, so nineteen dollars per pouch and so that times the influx of students every year, like.
So, but I think the startup cost is different than the year.
I'm not even gonna, I'm not even gonna do that math because then I gotta, I have to actually think that every student at the Galvin Middle School has a cell phone.
What is, what is the grant that we made application?
Um, Desi gave us twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you so much.
How much, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just gonna quickly add on to my prior comments. And I also have just a general question because I know that this device can be replicated per se because it has been in other school districts and people have been opening pouches without damaging the physical pouch. But what type of almost customization is available specifically within like the system of yonder? Because for example, wouldn't it be potentially better for students if the pouches were kept open and only shut if the students had to take disciplinary action?
No, it doesn't work very well like that because again, it's not something that's uniform to everybody. Um, and we're trying our best to make a, a system that's just uniform in that we don't really have to take time to make new rules and new policies for every, every single small thing that kind of opens up. You know, maybe, uh, you know, some people didn't have a greatest relationship with a teacher. Now that's, you know, new, new avenues for that relationship to be strained. Whereas everybody's just kind of, boop, phone in the pouch. If you see a phone, that's an issue, what's going on? Just makes it so much easier for everybody. I know it's tough to kind of tell, especially since I don't think anybody in the room here goes to yonder school yet. Um, but I can say that there's a really great article from some students in Springfield Central High School out west, where a reporter went a month before yonder was launched and a month after. The month before, all the students were like, we don't want this at all. And then a month after they're like, it's not actually not that bad. My grades are getting better, I have more friends and I don't have to deal with whatever's going on outside at school. So that's just anecdotally all I can.
I think a lot of the parents, or at least the feedback, they're, they're worried about the lock. So is there any way to implement the program as all Velcro? I mean, you would obviously, just to, to start maybe so people get used to it and you would hear the Velcro, I would think, opening. And that takes away the security piece, which is I think what a lot of parents are hung up on is, is the lock. But if you get them trained with just Velcro and just putting it in a, a, a standard pouch and everyone puts it in and everyone's following the same rule, I think that's, I don't know if that's even possible or defeats the whole purpose.
Be quite possible because then the onus would be shifted back onto the teacher, um, instead of onto the, you know, the students just to pop that phone in the pouch and close it up for the day.
I don't know because we haven't followed anything that's universal. Everyone's backpack looks different, it was either a backpack or a locker, some kids still keep it in their pocket. I mean, I, I have two kids in the middle school, I, I've heard more stories. So I'm for a standard approach and I know it's gonna help the teachers, but I just think it's the lock thing that, that a lot of parents are nervous about.
Even personally, I, I know that a lot of parents are like, well, I'm sure if there's an emergency, there's probably a magnet in the classroom. And then when they found out there wasn't, that was the, that was the deal breaker, that there wasn't a magnet in the classroom, that you had to go to one section of the school to open it. So even if there was, a teacher had an access to a magnet, that, I think that would even alleviate some of that, that nervousness of that locked pouch. So I don't know if something like that is possible. Cause I know you guys said that you were gonna put it in some people's offices, but if every teacher could get one, I don't know.
Also tough, just because we're putting the onus back on the teacher again. Um, it comes, it, it's kind of like the ultimate clock watching where if you know you want your phone and every teacher has a base, suddenly the teachers are gonna, there's gonna be one really popular teacher who may or may not open up some pouches. Um, but on the other side to it, it's just, it's very much so something that like, it works every, every single time.
I think, I think people see the good in the intent.
Yeah.
And I think people are trying to just think it through, right? And so I think people just need a little time and space to do that, right?
Absolutely.
And so, um, yeah. So, and, and, and so like, like I said, I think, you know, hearing from an SRO or the police on this and, and just kind of thinking this through a little bit more, I mean, might help us, um, get to a better space, right? So.
Is it still a November rollout then? There's a lot of work to do before November, that's a month away.
So, so it's, it's still September, right? And so I, I know November's very close, right? And, and so if, if we, we need, we, we need to learn more is what I'm saying, right? And so I'm not ready to say, you know, we're, you know, yes or no on a date, right? I think we need to commit ourselves to learning more about it, Dawn, so.
Can I ask?
Sure.
Um, is Policy and Communication working on this currently?
Nope.
I mean, you said that they.
Nope.
They came and talked to you.
But not for approval, just to tell us.
But I mean, but is there something that's being sort of refined or worked on to sort of go with this, this type of?
So we've, this, when we discussed cell phone policy earlier, I think it was late in the summer, uh, when that was, I think, one of the first agenda items. Um, that's when, uh, the grant came up, right? So, um, pretty much all the discussions that have come up around like the additional cell phone policy, which was gonna be like just looking at the cell phone policy. Um, the grants was basically the, the focus of the discussion. So in the last Subcommittee meeting, um, Megan came and, you know, presented, you know, what, you know, the pouch was gonna look like. So pretty much, you know, initially, you know, I was, you know, thinking that we were gonna look at the cell phone policy, but pretty much this, you know, the grant pretty much, you know, took over with this specific. Now, in terms of the actual policy, um, like the existing, like the only, the thing that's binding that the school committee has, uh, like, you know, has, which is not, you know, in the middle school handbook, is that, um, you know, that if, if the use is, I don't have it literally in my brain right now, but if the cell phone policy.
Teacher's discretion.
Yeah, and yes, and that basically if, if students use the cell phone without the teacher's permission, then it can be confiscated. Um, that's, you know, it's a pretty general.
So this would be my question, is if, is if what we're talking about at the table is taking away the discretion, but our policy says that there is discretion, we need to align on, I think, those two components.
Yes, I think that in terms of, so you're, you're, you're suggesting that this grant, that having this pouch could potentially be a violation of the standing policy.
Seems like the teacher would no longer have discretion.
Unless, unless they had a magnet in their.
No, no, absolutely.
Right? But then it goes counter to sort of the discussion that was happening, you know? I'm just saying maybe some discussion should happen in policy.
Yeah.
Also say that at the school level, it's not a change in policy, it's a resource added to an.
It's a resource added to an existing policy. The cellphones are away in lockers and if they're not, then students are not following our rules. So it's not a shift.
Yeah.
It's an additional resource.
Yeah, Stephen, I think, at a practical matter, I think it would only be a violation of the policy if a teacher asked their kids to take out their phone to get on their calculator to do a problem or, you know, in a physics class or whatever, something like in that. I could theoretically see, you know, that might, you know, but because obviously the teacher couldn't tell their kid to do that.
Yeah.
So.
Unless they have.
Other than that, unless they have the magnet, that's really, that's really the only thing, you know, going to your question, that's really the only thing I'm thinking that would be a violation of the policy, but otherwise, I'm pretty sure it would be aligned.
We don't currently have anything in writing. Saying that they're, that it has to be in their locker. We don't have anything in writing that does not say that in the Galvin handbook. That it has to be in their locker.
I would agree with you, Eileen. My recollection was when Mr. Colton Tony was around, there was an email that went out and I went to look for it that talked about that because it was a change at that time where they used to have to be like often in your backpack and then it became so pervasive and problematic that then it became it had to go in your locker. But I agree with you. I mean, when I went to look at the Galvin specific handbook, there's no text. Doug did dig up the old text, but the old text didn't match the locker thing regardless. So it was kind of like an implementation that was done at the Galvin level for Principal Colin Tony that's kind of stuck but was never put in writing.
Right, but, but that's, but there's a policy, if there's, I think Stephen's point is, is this, is this, should Policy and Communication take this up? Because we approved handbooks. If handbooks need to change, that's on school committee, that's on us, right? It's on administration. Handbooks need to be edited, that needs to be changed. If it impacts policy and, and it might conflict with policy, it has to go to Policy and Communication, right? And that too is on us, right? So there's, this, this doesn't make Yonder good or bad. Again, think about the problem that we're trying to solve, right? Or think about what we're trying to address, right? We're trying to, you know, trying to address or create a tier one support, right? So the kids are just making better decisions with their phones, right? And so at the high school, you know, they have shoe trees, right? Where kids put, is that fair to say?
Yes.
High schoolers, yes? So, you know, it doesn't happen in all classes, right? It'd be great if it did, right? It happens in most, right? But, you know, but this is, is not radically different than that, right? Again, this is just, you know, the Department of Ed has kind of backed this up with some resources. You know, this is the, the middle school administration kind of thinking that this might be an opportunity for us to make better what we have. That's the intent. Please let's not lose the intent, right?
Yeah, and I, and I think it comes down to not the intent, but kind of the safety aspect of it in case of a severe emergency. And I fully get the research says that the police don't want 1,000 school, school kids calling them or texting their parents, even if parents want to hear from their kids. You know, I almost wonder, and I realize this is, is the opposite of Matt said, but if like, if we went to Amazon and bought, you know, 200 little magnets that are, that can go, and I'm not joking, I'm serious, that can go on every employee's badge, then at least, you know, any employee in the building has an unauthorized Yonder unlocking device. And it would make me feel a little more comfortable that my kids wouldn't have to be ripping this thing apart with a scissors in case of emergency, that at least any place there's an adult in the building would have the.
Why wouldn't we create a hack? Why wouldn't we just have one for every teacher?
Well.
Like, you know what I mean?
So like. Because, because I'm sure the cost is, is enormous to go put one of those in every single classroom.
Right, we wouldn't do anything that's outside of the grant, right? And so, but again, I feel like we're way off track here, right? And so we're creating hacks, we're creating.
But it's not about being off track. I think there's a safety concern that's been expressed specifically around a severe event that's going on and phones being locked and inaccessible.
I would really appreciate it if I might be able to give you all a nice list of schools throughout New England, especially the region, who have, you know, used Yonder specifically more so for safety concerns and you guys can get a better fuller picture, not just here for me.
That'd be great, thanks.
Thank you.
I think, I know it's late, Meg, and I know you have your.
We, we'll revisit this.
Yes, yes. And so we likely will invite you to Policy and Communication, Meg, to talk more about this.
Happy to join.
And we'll, we'll kind of create next steps from there.
Sounds good. Thank you all.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, the parents that I didn't put in.
Again, stuck around.
Thank you. I can do idling.
No. Can we move this?
Okay, professional development.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then just invite Tim up.
So we're gonna move some of the items. We were doing so well on our time. We have our student ambassadors and we're, we're back up to our, our three hour meetings or four hours or five hour meetings, whatever it is now at this one. Anyway, I'd like to invite Tim up to talk a little bit about facilities. I have one comment about idling and then it's from, for me, we're going to move professional development to the, to the next meeting, if that's okay with you.
You're welcome to stay, but I also know it's a school night, so it's up to you guys. You want to talk about idling?
You can go, Shay, if you like.
I might head out.
Yeah, no, feel free.
Sorry.
No, don't.
Thanks for coming. Thank you for adding to the conversation.
Yes.
Shay, we might have to work on like the high sign or something.
I'm just saying, you're nine o'clock.
Of course.
Thank you.
Be well, thank you, I'm out.
Okay, you cleared the room.
Everyone's interested in what I have to say. Good evening. Just came to give you a very brief update of what's going on with facilities. Since I've just come from the new Wakefield Memorial High School of Butters meeting, I'll start there. The meeting was well attended, about 20 folks showed up, asked a lot of really great questions on construction logistics, how, how things are going to work over the next couple of years as we ourselves build a new high school as well as, as the Volk does the same thing concurrently. Great conversation and, you know, a lot of good ideas and things to look into. So we really appreciate folks from the neighborhood coming out and engaging with us and gives us different perspective on, you know, the effects that a, a construction project of this magnitude has on a neighborhood and, and how people are feeling. But generally, good feedback. So additionally, with the new Wakefield Memorial High School project, this week, folks in central office, we have a, a meeting with Brian Black, who's one of the architects working on the project. And we're going to do a detailed review of the design of central office, which will be included in the new school. We also are meeting with Bond Building, who is the construction management firm on the project. We're meeting about the first phase of this construction project is going to be adding a, a parking lot in the outfield of Walsh Field. So what you see now, there's some batting, batting cages past the fence in the outfield. Those will be moved temporarily and we'll be adding some park, you know, parking spaces to account for some of the spaces that we're going to be taking over during, during construction so that we're not losing too many parking spots. So we, we have a, a meeting this week, myself, Dennis Fazio from the Parks Department and Jerry Hammersley from, from Bond discussing field length with, for the, for baseball. So to make sure that we are accounting for the correct regulations when it comes to the baseball season. Also, I think it's important for you to mention, DeVoc is hosting an info session on Thursday evening at 7:00 PM. They're going to review their blasting protocols for their pad prep. So anybody who has questions about, you know, the, the logistics that are involved there can attend that. It's a Zoom meeting and the information is posted on the town of Wakefield website as well as their Facebook page. So very quickly, I'll run through a few facilities things. Cooling season's coming to a close. We are currently in the, I call it thermal no man's land. It's very difficult to manage temperatures in buildings this time of year. It's cold outside, the air conditioning's not running and the heat's not on yet. So we're doing our best to keep everybody comfortable. We're, you know, getting feedback from folks and doing the best we can to accommodate. October 15th is sort of the industry, industry standard to go back over to heat, which we will do and we are well prepared for that. And if you can believe it, you're going to curse me, but we are prepping for the winter season. So I'm starting to get my orders in for rock salt and, you know, other equipment that, that we need to be prepared to deal with snow. And it now is the time where any equipment, snow equipment that didn't get sent out and maintained in the last year, most of it did, will get done now. And so that way we'll be well prepared. So when the snow flies, we'll be ready, no unnecessary snow days. That's my, that's always my commitment and, and we'll take it from there. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I was just going to say, Tim, I saw the floor at the Woodville. And I talked to Mr. Feldman, that thing is a masterpiece.
Looks beautiful.
Came out awesome.
Yeah, I'm really psyched about that.
Great work.
Thank you very much. We had a lot of help in that.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions? Questions do go down later, it gets.
Are you going to the ribbon cutting at Walton?
I would miss it.
I'm glad I heard about it tonight.
Thursday morning, yeah.
Yes.
I will say I ran into the amazing Tim and his two little kids and his wife, who is a school committee super fan.
She's at home watching right now.
She loves watching school committee videos.
She reviews my performance. You can see how I did.
You have perfect timing, Tim. Thank you so much.
Great to see you, everybody. Thank you all very much.
So there was a question at the end of the last meeting and it was asked just if we could give an update on idling. I met with, are the no idling signs, right? I met with Bob Vincent and in, in meeting with Bob, that at this, his words, at this juncture, Mr. Mayo is going to meet with the traffic group, with the police, and they're going to make a determination about whether, in, in regard to the regulations, state law around no idling signs at schools, they're going to make a determination if we need the signs. If we do, they will be approved by town council and they will be put up, right? So that's, that's kind of where we are at, at this moment. And, you know, had a terrific conversation with Bob and he's looking forward to being an active liaison to the school committee. And if we have any feedback for him, he certainly welcomes it. So, thank you.
Is he going to come to a meeting?
Bob?
Yeah.
Oh, I, he would love to come to a meeting, right?
Does he want to sit at the table?
I think he'd love that too. Yeah, no, I think, I think he's, he's eager to, to get to work. And, yeah, I think he's, yeah.
Is this, if the no idling signs went up like around, around schools, I'm assuming, does that mean that parents wouldn't be able to be in running cars for a certain amount of time?
There's, there's a lot of flexibility in the statute. It's effectively like, don't idle unless your idling has a purpose.
Yeah, that's what I've read in the pol, okay, that's what I read in the policy. So the no idling sign would still mean we can idle if we're, if people were picking up kids.
Oh, yeah, that little thing on the sign?
Yeah, just want to be clear. Okay. Because I read the policy and it basically says you can, you can idle.
I'm deeply aware of that now. The rules. They're rules, right? And so it's just like.
The sign might be.
It feels like.
Might be, okay.
We can't land on any rules tonight.
What did you say was lawful? What do you, what did you say?
Laws are for law-abiding people.
Okay, so that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Christine?
We have a motion to accept two gifts.
We do. Moved that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of a total of $850 from the supporters of the Wakefield Warrior football program, $600 from Felix Freeman of Two High Street, Wakefield, and $250 from John Roberto of 217 Main Street, Lynnfield. The funds will be used at the discretion of the football program.
Second.
A motion's been made a second. Is there any discussion? Just to thank you. All in favor? There's no one opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Subcommittee reports. Finance and facilities, Mr. Markham is not here. Does anyone have an update?
We haven't met yet. It's, it's on the docket and then I think we had to reschedule.
Oh, is that the one that you were supposed to have? I don't know.
Yeah. So more to come next meeting.
Labor and personnel, you're up again.
Uh, yeah, I will, I will double down on my earlier statement, continuing to work on contract negotiations.
Student services?
We met last week. We had Andrew Sidroni. Sidroni and Jennifer Hart and Erin Kresos come in and speak about all the amazing programs. And I invited them to come to the greater school committee at some point because they have some amazing programs that, some that are just kind of getting wrapped up this year or revamped. And I would love to hear more about like how it's, you know, helping in our schools. And I think it's something that not a lot of people know about in our schools that we have. And so I just think the work they're doing is amazing. I just kept telling them it was amazing what they're doing. And so I would love to have them in at some point and share with the greater school committee.
Policy and communication?
Yeah, I wanted to just say I was very happy to have the students sitting next to us because that was something we were talking about last year, Policy and Communication. And Ahmed had reached out to me through Youth Council and it's great that after that year, we now have students that are actively sitting on the school committee table. So I'm very happy with, with that development. I think it's going to be very useful, just like we saw tonight, to get some student feedback on matters that affect them. Like we are a school committee, but obviously school committees are all about students and I think it does help to get their perspective. So I'm very happy with that. So cellphone policy, I don't think we have to talk anymore about that. But I was going to, but I think we're good for now. And then I just wanted to, I just want to make a, a quick statement. For our religious holiday policy, unfortunately, we had a few scheduled one-time events on the academic and non-academic calendar. That was a mistake, you know, and I just wanted to issue an apology for that, for Rashashada Yopkapur, but I just want to make an apology for that. We have our next meeting on next Tuesday, which I believe is October 3rd, where we will definitely be discussing the Yonder pouches and, and our cellphone policy. And Stephen, yes, we'll look at the language and see if, say contradictions are conflicting there. Thank you.
Liaison reports, does anyone?
The Human Rights Commission met a week ago. They are struggling to find volunteers. So if anyone is interested in joining the Wakefield Human Rights Commission, they did send out another message recently looking for volunteers. They've had some people drop out or not attend who were supposed to attend and I know they have at least two or three openings on the commission. They're actively planning a couple of fall events. They're looking into something for Hispanic heritage. Teresa, who's one of the members of the commission, is talking about some music, music type event that she's trying to coordinate. And they're also looking at something for indigenous people, on the Indigenous Peoples' Day topic. And then for January, they're looking at planning something for Martin Luther King Jr. and Corretta Scott King as well. And just like us, there will be a town day on October 7th.
Thank you. I, oh, go ahead.
I have a youth council update, so they met last week. Great, great group of kids. Kevin used to talk about how, how cool it was to sort of be engaged with, with them. It is, it's awesome. They, they just have ideas and execute and it's cool. They're currently working on trying to find out, find paths to, to finance some of their own ideas. So they're looking at three different avenues of like grant funding, some, perhaps some funding for town council and then perhaps through their Snow Angel program. You know, if there could be some sort of revenue from that, just interesting stuff. And seeing them form like very young government is, is so cool. They talk about doing subcommittees and just like we do. So great group. And they are doing their Snow Angel program again where they try and pair seniors with students that might shovel their driveway and their walkways. So that program will happen again and they'll have more information about it at the town day as well. They will also be there on October 7th. Day as well, they will also be there on October 7th.
Thank you.
The next CPAC meeting is Wednesday, October 4th, and that'll be the first one I'll be attending, so excited.
The Environmental Sustainability Committee met on Thursday, September 14th. They have an excellent Facebook page, which I, I think I've mentioned that, and one of the things they're highlighting is their electrical, electric vehicle showcase, which is going to be on Sunday, October 22nd. There'll be all different kinds of, if your kids like cars, it's probably worth going down to check out all the electric vehicles, or even if you as an adult love cars, you should check that out. They will also be at Town Day, they'll have a table, and Town Day is October 7th. We won't be meeting before Town Day. And then the other, the other thing, they will be doing their pumpkin disposal, I don't know the right word, compost, when they'll, I'll share that date, they probably told me, and I forgot, but it's definitely after Halloween, and I know they'll be at the different schools, and you can drop off your pumpkins, and you don't have to be part of the school system, anyone can drop off a pumpkin.
It's a partnership with Black Earth.
It is Black Earth, yeah.
Black Earth compost?
Yep. I think they told us how many, I'll see if they have any, how many pounds we dropped off last year, it was a big number. You can also volunteer to haul the pumpkins onto the truck, which I guess is very therapeutic.
Check the pumpkin, kids love it.
Oh, yeah, okay, so, lots of opportunities. Future dates and agenda items, our next school committee meeting is Tuesday, October 10th at 7:00. Wakefield Town Day, Saturday, October 7th, from 1:00 to 4:00, and the tri-board meeting is Thursday, October 26th. We'll keep these on the agenda. Does anyone have any agenda items for our next meeting?
Are we getting an MCAS update?
We will.
Next meeting.
October 24th, we were planning...
Okay.
If that works for the committee, that was what we were planning for.
We'll be here.
Yeah.
Did you help us?
Same.
MCAS. And I think is, is the YBR, the youth risk, is that October 2?
That, that'll be the first meeting in October.
Okay. So we're booked for October.
I was going to ask if we could talk to, was it, it was Youth Risk Behavior Survey last year, where parents were asking about the ability to opt out of it?
Correct. First meeting in October.
The, the email happened to go out to everybody, and we had talked at that time about whether or not we could do, we could separate distribution lists within Wakefield Public Schools. I don't know if, who am I trying to think of?
Jeff Weiner.
Jeff Weiner, to tell us if we could be successful on that this year.
It's not an annual survey, right?
Every two years.
Every two years.
Okay.
So, so they're coming to talk about the results?
Okay.
From last year?
Yes, this is not about, yeah.
And then there'll be an off-year, so we have a whole year to...
Oh, a whole nother year to make this system work. Oh, good.
Plenty of time.
Good.
Any, school committee comments, does anyone have any?
I just want to close out tonight for comment, thanking Ryan Boyd from WCAT. Anytime I have ever needed WCAT coverage at anything in Wakefield, I send an email to Ryan, I call Ryan, he's literally always here, and not one says he ever said no to providing coverage. And I haven't obviously been in another town or city.
Oh, Ryan.
But you've always had the ability here to have amazing, both local and government coverage, and Ryan's been very instrumental for that for a very long time. And while I'm happy for Ryan and his family that he's going to have a life and a job around the corner and can leave work at 5:00 versus being here with us till 10:00 at night, it's a huge loss for Wakefield. And I know there's a good crew left here as well, and we'll learn soon who's going to take over, but Ryan, thank you. You've, you've been amazing, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things, I won't try to repeat what Pete said, but good luck, Ryan, you did, you did so well. You know, I thought you had big shoes to fill when you came in, and you just have done a wonderful job, you're just a great partner for, for all of us. But I want to thank you, Amy, I thought it was a great idea to have the PTOs come in. One of the things that kind of struck me, it's a trite saying, this idea of it takes a village, and, you know, hearing from WEF, hearing from the PTOs, you just see all the amazing work that goes on to make all of this happen, and the amount that parents and volunteers and everyone does to make this school district what it is, it does take a village. And, you know, so many times, the people that lead those organizations and so many others never get any kind of recognition or attention, and so I thought to even, they may not love it, but even to have them have the possibility of coming in and, and, and being able to talk about the great work they're doing, so I love the mascots, maybe we can get some more. I loved watching Eileen react to them, and when the parents were talking about some very serious things, in the corner was the bear over their shoulder, it was quite the scene, but that was really wonderful, great idea, great addition, and I hope it's something that we can, that we can continue, so, thank you, that was great.
Thank you. Yeah, and I want to thank the parents that came out for public comment, you know, people, I know it was bubbling up on social media, but it really makes a difference when they come down and, and share, you know, their thoughts, their ideas, it makes a difference, it's, it's actually going to continue the conversation, and, you know, we want everyone to be comfortable sending their kids to our schools.
I agree.
Yes. Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
I do. Move that the school committee adjourn the meeting of Tuesday, September 26th, 2023. Second.
A motion's been made in second, is there any discussion? All in favor? No, no one opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Put your hands up.
I might, I might have a question. Maybe that's...
Thank you.
I'm glad I heard about it tonight.
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 I'm glad I heard about it tonight.